... remain standing for the last time. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Come on, the silence, please. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dean.
Mr. Chairman, call attention to the fact that I added a den in item K eight, which is not an action item, compact information regarding channeling up change and pricing change.
If you know that the petition is out of moving without these numbers. Sir?
If you could have just a moment of discussion, I wondered if it would make sense to try to adopt some of the business under item Q, the whole business for this evening's meeting? If it made sense to do that this afternoon?
I mean, could most definitely do two and three this afternoon?
Okay. And it seemed like they may very well fit under your normal update, if you thought that that was appropriate, Mr. Curry.
I would add, we could slide into whole business during the, during, move into H.
I would suggest that maybe that the course should be amended to include that change, moving Q two and three and making them H five and six? If that was acceptable?
I have a motion. Move Q two and three to H five and six?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's second. Any other discussions, Chairman? Is Mr. Curry, is there any concern from your perspective on moving those items? No, sorry. Those were items that I brought in, in preparing the agenda, thought that would be of interest to the public, but with the second amendment item also being on the evening agenda, which will be of interest to the public and take a lot of time, probably makes sense to include that.
Boards and elders, I have a question concerning the consent agenda, since this is the first agenda we've used. Would now be the time to make the, put forward the question whether we would, if we were going to have this over there?
You would do that, just as we begin the consent agenda.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion fair. Steward court, Dr. Reynolds.
Greetings from your friends in Hampton, Atlanta, not just being before public comment, but I really appreciate the blood to do today. So, it's been incredibly busy November. Thank you to all of you who came out to another moving Veterans Day ceremony on November eleventh. As always, the band was absolutely amazing and a keynote address by Staff Sergeant Jennifer Schneid, also a dedicated RCPS mother, was very powerful. All right, so beginning with student accolades, I cannot even begin to express how proud I am of our student athletes. On November twentieth, the fall sports awards ceremony was fully a packed house as we honored so many teams and athletes who made postseason appearances. Special congratulations to cross-country, competition cheer, volleyball, and theater, who departed this morning at 6:30 a.m. with a send-off to states, all who represented Rapid Hennig so well at the state level. Also JP and JV volleyball finished both their seasons undefeated, which tells you a lot about our team coming up. And also Rachel Weckhurst in cross-country earned the state runner-up title, so very proud. What an incredible showing for our student athletes. I expect his name to win the sports, certainly. We could not be more grateful for the strong showing of student and community support for our first ever Rapid Hennig food pantry stuff-the-bus campaign. Throughout the month of November, students and parents brought in food items needed over the Thanksgiving holiday, including items such as stuffing, salad dressing, sweet potatoes, and cranberry sauce. RCPS and Commit to be Fit created the fun competition between grade levels to see which grades could donate the most food to the pantry. While it was a very close competition with only a seven item difference between first and second place winners, the fourth through seventh grade teams won the competition with a total of 172 donated food items, and all, a total of 489 food items were donated totaling 537 pounds of food. So, very, very proud of that. November is also, was also the fourth month for career and technical education as well as college and, college preparatory education. Last month, many activities were facilitated in order to enhance the life readiness of our students through hands-on, meaningful experiences. These included the second installment of our middle school career talks, where members of the community representing different career clusters come to speak to middle school students about their career and the path that they're taking. On November sixth, the seniors participated in mock interviews where 12th grade students met with members of the community to undergo a process similar to that of a real-life job interview. Prior to the interview, students took part in a resume writing workshop led by staff from the Virginia Career Works and an interview skills workshop led by members of our profile of the graduate team weeks before these interviews took place in order to prepare for the exercises. Six professionals from the Rapid Hennig community donated their time to interview the student participants, offering advice and interview tips. Each senior mock interview lasted about 25 to 30 minutes, and students were able to practice their interview skills and ask questions and receive feedback about their performance. Career Day was held on November eighth in the high school gym, where all students, grades seven through 12, participated in getting to know folks from the community and surrounding areas representing the following career clusters: architecture and construction, welding and technical arts, AV technology and communications, education and training, finance, government and public administration, health science, hospitality and tourism, information technology, law, public safety, corrections and security, science, technology, engineering, and math, and transportation, distribution, and much less than business. On November eighteenth, the high school celebrated Virginia College Application Week as a statewide initiative to increase the number of college applicants. Ms. Slaton, the grant-funded, full-time Virginia College Advisor at RCHS, helped coordinate and plan the events for the week. Students had the opportunity to work on college applications, participate in onsite admissions, participate in school-wide scavenger hunt, as well as answer college trivia questions. Peer mentors and eighth graders competed to complete six different puzzles in the college and career escape room and learn more about their choices after high school. The weekend was college gear and RCHS spirit days, which are always a lot of fun. At the elementary school, November was our One School, One Book Month, where the PTO and Title I teams worked to engage the entire school community around literacy. This year's book was The One and Only Ivan. It's a book about the internal musings of a caged gorilla in an interstate mall. The story humorously unpacks the issues surrounding animal confinement in a touching story told by the great Silverback Ivan. The story was very well received by our student body and parents, and a culminating event took place on November 22nd, Wild About Literacy, where families were engaged in fun reading activities tied to the novel. If you haven't read that book, I really highly recommend it. I read it to my, my children, too, and it's just such a great story and a touching story. In the hallway, we saw one of our students who had typically been very unengaged in, in reading, experienced a lot of trauma at home and things, and we saw this, this world just light up with this story and couldn't wait to tell her teacher about what's happening to Ivan and the elephants and Ruby and all those characters. It's wonderful, so it's a great initiative. Also, we've begun research for a new elementary principal. I'm sure you've seen that. There is a community survey online posted in order to gather feedback about the competencies and core attributes of prospective candidates, which we will use to inform the interview team as we screen and interview applicants over the coming few weeks. Our hope is to have a new principal seated as close to the start of second semester as possible, so if you know some good candidates, please send them our way. The application is available on our employment page on the RCPS website. Finally, I also want to thank you for your supportive response to working together to strategize this budget season. As you know, through the biennial re-bench marketing, we now have a new local composite index, which is now higher. We've been there before, but usually what that means is more local effort and less state-led or mandated state requirements. So, we'll work together to understand the new funding formulas as soon as they are released, and we'll, we will again conduct careful analysis of all our items and services to be sure that we are utilizing the most cost-effective approaches to meet the needs of our students and families. As always, we appreciate your dedication to the service of the county and your continued support of the schools. Special thank you to Mr. Lizinski and Mr. Welch for your time and dedication on the board and your always supportive nature with the schools. We really appreciate that. We hope to see all of you out at the high school band concert on December 12th at 6:00 p.m. A lot of you don't like to miss that. The elementary concert is December 17th at 6:30, and that's the chorus and band concert. You have any questions for me?
Drama competition?
Yes, the state competition, they just got sent up this morning. Thank you to the fire and rescue companies who set them up at 6:30 a.m. this morning to go to Charlottesville State. Yes, so they are competing, yes. On another side, written by our drama theater coach, also Paulette, a new teacher, so. Great show.
Right away.
Any other questions? I understand you may have been coming to our place this evening. If so, I just want a friendly reminder from our friendly neighborhood sheriff and myself that it is a weapons-free zone, so just reiterate that.
Thank you for accommodating the board.
Of course, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time in public comment, anyone wishing to speak, may you throw by a second raise to your hand when recognized, stand and state your name or district of which you're from, direct your comments to the board, and I've already got another one.
Okay, I'm Ellie Johnson, Piedmont District. And since this is the last meeting for, as Mr. Welch and Ms. Lizinski, I just wanted to come to thank you both for the service you've given our county. I just, I know that both of you have done the best you could do with what you had to do with, and, and for the best interest of the county. And you have not just been a supervisor for your district, I think you've been a supervisor for the county, and you certainly have been, both of you certainly have been my supervisors, because I felt like I could talk with you for a long time, and I've done it plenty of times. And so, Roger, I'll just have to tell you, I've worked with you for 20 years. And we had such a good working relationship. I don't think that we ever, I don't know that we ever disagreed, but if we ever disagreed, it was another disagreement. And I guess the best thing that I can say to you today, that I think about you, you're just like an old-time Rapid Hennig gentleman, and there's nothing left anymore. And indeed, it's been a blessing to have worked with you. You've been a blessing for our county, and you certainly have been a blessing to me. And I just wish for you and Geneva the best. You need some peace and happiness, and so I just hope you have a lot of it. And John, I've worked with you on school board, and I know what you're like. But let me finish, let me finish saying what I gotta say. I had you with Chandler, and I was the vice chair, and never one time did you ever have a meeting that you didn't call and ask me, is there anything you want to add or anything you want to change? And you always called me every day before the meeting, and we had, I couldn't say anything but something good about our working relationship. And I just know that, I think you've done a good service for the county, not as long as Roger, not as long as I have, but I think we've just, I think it's, you've both been an asset to this forum, and I think you've got two good numbers coming on, and I'll work with them as well as I have with you up too, with all of you, but I know one thing, I'll miss you both. And I, and John, I want to tell you, in your new endeavor, I'll be there for you. I'll be, I'll be glad to send you a message. Thank you both, thank you both, very much, very much.
Thank you very much.
I want to tell that with truth. Great job, Paul. All right, who else would like to speak? Don?
Lou, Don Loff, Jackson District. Just wanted to say that it's been great having you recognize me for at least a little over a decade, and it's been, it's been a pleasure. I wanted to, I'm not going to go into all the ins and outs of the second amendment, because of the rabbit hole, but what I am going to go into is, I do have questions whether the board supervisors should be diving into the rabbit hole. Reading the, the Second Amendment sanctuary, the motion that has come forward, it seems like the county board supervisors is contemplating the idea that it will be, take on the positions that it will figure out what is constitutionally appropriate, and I have a lot of respect for all the board supervisors. However, I'm pretty sure of all your biases, I don't know of any that actually has argued before the spring court or has any constitutional law degree, and if so, I would hope that they'd be run, because maybe we could, maybe that'd be helpful. The whole idea that the board supervisors are going to determine whether something's constitutional or not, and then tell employees of the county whether or not to, whether or not to enforce that law or not, seems like it's not exactly the purview of the board supervisors. You know, laws will be made in Richmond, and we will not like them. I've sat here enough times when we had unfunded mandates come from Richmond, and we don't always like them, but that doesn't mean we can ignore them. I'm going to go pay my taxes after this. I can't ignore that either. I have to tell you the truth, I don't like everything, every nickel and dime to spend every budget, but I still got to do it, because that's my, that's, that's my role, and your role is to, is to run this county. There's lots of things that need to be done in the county. You know, I live in Englishville, I don't know, you know, we, we have our dump issue, which is pretty anchors down there, people can't even back out without trying to almost backing over each other, you know, it looks like a warrant, a warrant of garbage down there. So, there's plenty of things to work on. I just hope we don't sort of go into this rabbit hole of trying to figure out what is constitutionally viable as far as Second Amendment. I'm especially interested in the fact that it contemplates the idea of not only telling our employees what, what it can do and can't do as far as enforcing the law, but also that it contemplates the idea of spending money from the county on fighting legislation that's not even out yet. So, we have a sort of imaginary legislation that may come down, and we're all ready to say that we're going to spend money trying to fight it. Once again, we don't have any constitutional lawyers on staff, so I figure that's going to cost a lot of money trying to come up with a amicus brief to try to weigh in on that. Meanwhile, there's going to be plenty of people who are going to weigh in on that. So, once again, as the county, let's work on county issues, try to get county issues done, and don't sort of sign up to jump down the rabbit hole yet, and conceding yet. Thank you so much.
Anyone else here to speak?
John Sullivan, Hampton District. As I am not going to the gun-fighting, okay, or I'll shoot out tonight, I thought I'd take the opportunity to really, I lean. John Lizinski and Roger, you're two last names, and to be on the receiving end of the public's opinion on a lot of subjects, whatever opinion, and the, it may exhaust the entire infrastructure, but I think you've both done a really extraordinary job. And Roger, in particular, you've been on the board for, I think, 20 years, and chairman for 10, and I've watched you for probably 10 of those years. And I think you have, for all the conflict that's going on, I think you are always want to listen to people, you're looking for sort of balance, you're looking for pulling people together, and I think both your instincts are absolutely together. And even amidst all the stuff that's been going on, rarely, you're right, 100% you weren't perfect, rarely did you lose your temper, and I think you've always behaved with a sort of sense of decency, respected what other people said, and I think that's a great model. And I hope that the here and candidates that join the new board and the remaining people will all try and, I want to start from scratch and, and trust each other and be collaborative and try and get stuff done. Everybody wants it, you want it. But anyway, thank you, we appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Steve Hensley, out of Cassington. I think the interesting thing to note is, is that the Constitution is for the people. Doesn't say that you have to have a constitutional lawyer here to go before the spring court. The Constitution is to protect the people, it's to protect certain rights that are enshrined to all the people. And if we see a government which we believe is going or headed in the way of violating those rights, I see no reason that the people in the forms of towns and counties cannot produce a resolution that says we disagree with the way our government is going. I don't see that that is a problem at all, because the last time that this disagreement occurred, hundreds of thousands of Americans died in the Civil War. So, I don't see that a peaceful means of discussion is in any way against our way of life. And so, I am for the Second Amendment resolution, I think is needed. I work a lot in DC, and I certainly see how government can be overly burdensome and push on people's rights and even take them away when people don't stand up for that. So, that's why I am for this resolution and for any discussion that occurs later today or tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak?
I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm from the Wakefield District, and I just want to thank Roger and John for an amazing service to this community. Roger, I can't take up any time, but we've met and no matter how complicated my idea has been, you've always received a way of good humor and wise comments, and I will really miss having you sitting here at this table. I want to thank you so much for all of your service. And you too, John, thank you for all of your wise words and, and really heroic service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else here to speak?
I wasn't going to say too much, but I really had my thoughts to what everyone else is saying about Mr. Welch.
Name of the district, please.
Oops, sorry, Shield, Russell, Hampton District. I appreciate everything that Roger Welch has done for our county. The spirit of a gentleman is very important. The stability of our working together to have everything look forward is very important, and I think he's been a critical model of someone who's been able to trite old everything together in spite of interesting conversations that have taken place at some of our board meetings. And John, I want to compliment you on the broadband committee. A lot of people, I was at another meeting last week, and somebody was just joking about over broadband committee. What have they done? Well, they've done a huge amount of stuff, and they've laid a foundation for how we can look forward in all the research that John's committee has done, what John has done in every single board meeting that he has come to, he has had something to report. His committee has had its meetings. He's been active, proactive in trying to figure out what is the best way forward for our county with broadband, with cell towers, and also with, with the broadband, and that's crucial. There was a wonderful letter to the editor of the newspaper, to the Rapid Hennig News this week, about a young kid, I'm old, I can say that, she's 19, and she was saying that she was brought up in this communication era that we're in, and her grandfather or dad doesn't have a cellphone. He's still locked into the old way of doing stuff, but she sees that there's, that we need to go forward in, in a better way and get that technology going. And I'll say it again, the cell tower thing is very important. As far as the view shed, I've given you examples of what kind of cell towers, and Phil Irwin did write a nice letter, and he's saying that he was afraid that cell towers would be everywhere. I don't think that's going to be the point. I think you're going to have, what I've said before with you guys, it's a big puzzle. Cell towers are a part of that puzzle. The silos are another part of that puzzle. There's going to be fiber coming over from, I guess, Front Row with Chantel or something. That's another form, and it's all going to fit together to make us go forward. As far as, this evening's going to be interesting. I was just talking to our Rapid News videographer, saying, I hope you had a lot of energy, because I think it's going to go a while. I will say something, I will talk this evening as well, because I have my turn. The zoning ordinance, I think, is going to be a very interesting conversation. The Second Amendment thing is something that people have not brought up, and that's going to the wise of gun violence and gun things, and that's our mental health. I think it's more appropriate with this thing, you want to put this resolution, that you need to add that to wanting your government not only to help our citizens by addressing the mental health situation that needs to be addressed hugely, and it's very, very important. And if you don't do that, you haven't done your job properly, in my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? Yes?
My name is Robert Yell, I'm in the Piedmont District. I just wanted to comment on the Second Amendment resolution. I am fully in support of it. I'd like to direct attention to our Virginia State Constitution, specifically Article One, the Bill of Rights. It makes it very clear to me, a declaration of rights made by the good people of Virginia in the exercise of their sovereign powers, which rights do pertain to them and their posterity as the basis and foundation of government. Specifically for here, I'll, I'll just reference this, section three, that government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community. It goes on to say that, and when, whenever any government shall be found inadequate or contrary to these purposes, a majority of the community hath an admissible, inalienable, indefeasable right to reform, alter, or abolish in such a manner that shall be judged as conducive to the public will. The, the point is, we can certainly, as a county, sit and talk and discuss and make the resolution if we need to, because it's there in our state constitution. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else here, please? I declare public comment closed. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. This is my first attempt.
Mr. Chairman, let me to point out to the board members and the public, within board docs on items within the Consent Agenda, the policy statement of how the board intends to handle these items is repeated for each item. If you like, I can read it as a refresher to the board members and the public, and then actions can now take place. Per your policy 820, the Consent Agenda shall be introduced by motion to approve the Consent Agenda. It shall be considered by the board as a single item. It should be noted that a discussion by any member of the board regarding any item in the Consent Agenda beyond asking questions for simple clarification. On objection by any member of the board supervisors to inclusion of any item on the Consent Agenda, that item shall be removed from the Consent Agenda forthwith. Such objection may be recorded at any time prior to taking a vote on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Items which have been objected to and removed from the Consent Agenda shall immediately, after the vote, the Consent Agenda has been taken, be considered individually and in the order which they were objected to. Approval of a motion to approve the Consent Agenda shall consider approval, adoption, or enactment of each motion, resolution, or item of business thereon, exactly as if each had been acted upon individually.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to pull Item 5 from the Consent Agenda, a letter signed by the Chairman of the Board for the FCC in support of the federal broadband block grants. We haven't, as a board, actually taken up that discussion to decide whether we're going to send that letter. I think that that's bad policy, just further. No question I have.
So was this letter written July 1st? Is it already sent? It has not been sent and that is an error, so it should be pulled off. Before any motion is made, considering the Consent Agenda, the accounts payable does include payment to Walker Jones in the amount of $1,394.50 for litigation services for Drag 1. So as much as the Consent Agenda will approve, the accounts payable will be appropriate for board members to read the FOIA declaration. If you would like to, you can place that in front of each responsibility.
So if you're looking for us to read this first before anybody puts motion forward to approve the Consent Agenda, before you approve.
It could be before or after a motion for that.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended by Mr. Frazier, pulling out E5, I guess, including that. Under new business?
No, it'll follow Consent Agenda immediately.
Okay. I'll just go ahead and make that motion through process, sir.
If you may, in a second.
So before action is taken, it'd be appropriate to read the declaration.
Okay. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23115H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Drag 1 case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in advance action fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of the payment to Walker Jones, whose firm provides legal counsel related to the Drag 1 case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more individuals or three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I'm able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of the payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Drag 1 case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of the payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Drag 1 case. The nature of my potential personal interest is in the fact that the named firm is providing legal defense for individual members and for the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.231159H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, whose firm provides legal counsel related to the Drag 1 case. The nature of my potential personal interest is in the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and as a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement as in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you. So you have a motion and a second to the consent agenda that you find on the table.
All unopposed in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Pursuant to your rules, then, Item E5 is now taken up independently for discussion. This is an item that the state broadband, chief broadband advisor, forget his title, Mr. Feynman, has asked all localities to consider. And what it does is, it channels the available, it is requesting the federal government to channel their available federal grant funds through things like the Connect America Fund or Reconnect Grant Program, rather than localities having to apply for those in the federal system. He's trying to have the federal government funnel those to the state so they could be available for localities to apply through the state system like the VATI grants. The federal grants are very hard to apply for, very involved. And doing this would allow us to work with our state rather than the federal government. It's on request of Mr. Feynman that localities send a letter to the FCC asking them to wrap their money to the state in the block so then the state can hand it out.
And if I may add to that, Mr. Curry, in Mr. Feynman's draft letter here, and I believe it's on the second paragraph, page 2, it cites some statistics in that through the VATI Virginia Telecom Initiative, since 2017, the Commonwealth has awarded 25 million in funding, which has leveraged significant private funding and connected over 71,000 homes and businesses within two years. And by comparison, the FCC's Connect Americas Fund 2 program awarded 84.5 million dollars to providers in Virginia. So that's over three times the amount of money, but connected only 32,600 homes and businesses. That would be over the course of the next decade. So four times, three times, the money connected less than 50% of the homes and businesses, which is why Mr. Feynman is asking that the monies flow through the state as opposed to individual localities making the request to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which Mr. Curry said is a pretty cumbersome process, especially for a small county that doesn't really have a lot of staff that's able to fill out these applications expeditiously.
And that, with that said, if someone's reminded to move approval, is to authorize the chair to sign the letter. And in doing that, I would ask that you note that the date on the letter is incorrect and should be changed to December 2nd.
Well, I'm putting in a poll of a motion to approve it. I just, that practice, we started the first time we did this, and we had discussed previously.
Agreed. I'll second that if that's a motion for Mr. Frazier.
Motion made in favor. All unopposed in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried.
That brings us to, well, Item number six was approved as part of the Consent Agenda. It brings us to presentations. The first item being the fiscal year 2019 audit presentation from Mr. Ray Robinson, Mark Cox. There's a hard copy of the audit report and letter that replace the PDF copy of what I'm on the board has for us.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Robinson, Mark Cox. And as Mr. Curry just said, I'm here to present the fiscal year 19 audit report. There are two documents that were provided, the actual audit report and also a much thinner letter there, the communication with the charge of governance. First, I'll go through the letter, the communication with the charge of governance. This is the standard communication that's required for the end audit process. The few things I'll point your attention to, the second paragraph there, on there are significantly audit matters where it has to do with accounting estimates. There are two major estimates that are part of the financial statements. Both of them have to deal with the NBY, the full accrual financials, as they don't affect the fund statements and statutory statements. Those are the estimates of capital assets, which drives the annual compensation expense. And another major estimate that's part of the financials has to do with the net pension liability and the net opad liabilities. Those numbers come 100% from actuarial evaluations. And those are very much based on estimates there. The next three paragraphs are all connected, where we had no difficulties encountered dealing with management throughout the audit process. We had a few minor adjustments as part of the audit process. We were in agreement with, I mean, it wasn't in agreement with those. And then on the next page there, the disagreements with management, which we had on any account policies, any accounting issues whatsoever. From that, we can actually get into the report. And I will just point your attention to a few parts of the report. The first will be on page one, which is the actual independent audit report. This is where we're issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the same opinion for the counties. The actual part that is the opinion of that letter is the first paragraph on page two. And if we flip over to pages four, five, and six, these are what's referred to as your NBY financial statements. These are financial statements on a full accrual basis that include your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities, most notably capital assets and your long-term debt. The, usually the more useful statements for local governments are your fund statements, which start on page seven. Page seven is your balance sheet of your governmental funds. And then page nine to five is your income statement for the year. As you can see, at the bottom of the page there, your NBY fund balances for the governmental funds. The total of the governmental funds is 6.6 million. And in the first column there, your general fund, fund balance is 4.9 million. And looking forward a little ways, page 12 is the start of your footnotes to the financials. And most notably, pages 24 through 26, pages 24, 25, are just, has to do with your capital assets. These are the capital assets of the school board on the county and of the recreation authority there. The next note, right after that, N8, is your long-term obligations. These are your debt notes as well.
Which, question last year was the amount of our outstanding debt relative to bonds. And that's, N8, a very tall 1.5 million dollars at the end of that one. Yes? There are other accounting.
Right. Yeah, on the page 25 there, that's what, so that shows your total, what are considered long-term obligations with the county. Your first line there, your general obligation bond is 1.5 million. Down below that, the net pension liability and net opad liability, those are coming from those actuarial numbers there. So the bulk of that total long-term obligation is 7.8, and all you 1.5 of that is the way it's a long-term debt.
accrued landfill remediation costs. What's it, why do you remember?
Landfills in Virginia have to fund your post-closure care, depending on when the landfill is closed. It's either 10 years of guaranteed post-closure care or 30 years of guaranteed post-closure care. So this is an estimate of the future years of post-closure care that the county will have to fund based on estimates from our consultants. Each a cost, all costs.
And that number in there, that current year addition to it, that's based on an engineering study and that there's an inflation factor that is applied every year there. So of that 70,000, there's no actual dollars flowing in and out. It's just based on that. The next exhibit I'll point your attention to is exhibit eight, which starts on page 79. This is probably the most beneficial statement in the entire report for you all. This is your general fund budgetary comparison. Shows your revenues and expenditures, original budget, final budget, as well as the actual actual numbers throughout the year. The next section there, going forward, are mostly dealing with various schedules that have to do with net pension liability and net opad liabilities there. Exhibits 29 on page 105 through 33, these are the governmental fund statements of the school board between school operating fund and school past security fund. And 29, your balance sheet, 31 on page 107, your income statement. And then the school operating fund budgetary comparison schedule is on page 109, exhibit The next section of the report is the statistical section that starts on page 113. These exhibits are, these tables are presenting These exhibits are, these tables are presenting 10 years worth of data, gives you a little bit more historical information there. The last section, of course, is the compliance section. Page 126 is, this is our letter on, as part of a governmental accounting standard, we have to test and term control of our financial reporting. And as part of that process this year, we noted deficiencies and know material weaknesses. The next level that we provide is on page 128, and this has to do with the compliance requirements of uniform guidance, which is your, if you're required to have a simple audit for federal money received, which you all do every year, because once you get over $750,000 for the year, you're required to have a simple audit. And as part of our procedures, this year, we found that efficiencies and compliance there as well. Page 130 and 31, this is your schedule of those federal awards. This is on page 131, total federal money that was received and expended this year for the county and school awards, including this as well, was 114,66,220. And that is all I have at this time, but we have the answer.
Page, page 108, just want to understand this change. Exhibit 32, change in net position of government activities, referring back to exhibit two. Most of this is deferred pension, I guess?
So that is...
Is that a big, is that an unusual number? Or is that a...
So this exhibit generally is reconciling the ending fund balance for the school, the school funds, which is that top number there, the 2894. Excuse me, this is the change. So the current year change in fund balance for governmental fund, which is your budgetary side of the county, was the 2894. Then this lists out the differences between those fund statements back to your exhibit two, which is your full accrual, including your capital assets, long-term debt, the net pension liability activity and net opad. And as you can kind of see there, down towards the bottom, your compensated absences of 16,440 on exhibit 32. That's your change from the ending balance of compensated absence last year to then the balance this year. Because that's a long-term liability. It's not counted during the fund statements, but it is on NBY full accrual statements.
So there's no red flags, no alarms in any of this, that you put that in the letter?
Yeah.
Put that in the letter? Anything that were out of...
We had no issues that we found were, you know, communicated in the findings of the report or as a management letter comment as well. We were, it was clean audit overall.
Is that typical among most of the counties in Virginia?
I would say that the majority do get a clean opinion on modified opinion. There are varying levels of management letter comments versus findings of the report. That's kind of a wide range there.
So we're the shining star in this thing. I do want to thank Mr. Rollard and Robinson, Farmer Cox, for helping us have this audit completed on schedule. Code of Virginia requires us to upload this information to the APA by number 30, and that hasn't happened in past years, and this is a good year to start, because this is the year you have to start applying a little banner that you need to get it in on time on your website. So beyond that, this is probably the first I remember that we guessed.
As far as we know. Yep. And we couldn't have done that without Mr. Currie and, you know, that, and the school board's help as well.
Yep.
Yep. It is both sides have to be in agreement there.
So the last step of this is we'll have to send a notification to the state that this audit is in fact presented to you, and we will not do that.
Are you walking out?
Yes.
If you hand this to that handsome gentleman there on the way out.
You don't want to keep one? I got a couple for them.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson will take that. Study it. Be back to you shortly. Yeah. Good one, John. All yours, my friend.
Mr. Karen, members of the board, I was going to leave three, but we'll leave now while we're between the ten items. Please go ahead.
Roger, bring your back.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, the recreational facilities authority took your investment of $12,000 through the authority for the accessible parking project and made it happen. Mr. Dan Ackard is here, he'd like to share with you the approval delay.
Thank you very much, Gary, and members of the board. I'm on a guest, if that presentation can come up. I just want to share with you all of this success story that we had happen at the park, just across the street from the county of Washington. We have put in some accessible parking for people with mobility challenges, and this has been thought about since about the year 2017. The rec authority has had this idea, but we had live person funding from outside organizations, and we're not successful. So what we felt we needed to put together was a master plan for the park, which really encapsulated what our mission statement was, what our vision was, what our values were, what our goals were, and how we're going to start implementing these things. One of the things we wanted to achieve with this master plan was to have some kind of a platform by which we could justify making investments like accessible parking. So the vision we have is to inspire a passion for parks and healthy lifestyles by providing sustainable, dynamic, and inclusive, and that word is in there intentionally. Inclusive parks is to support a thriving community, and our values speak to enhancing the accessibility for the recreational facilities, not just for a few users, but all users that may want to come. We then took these values and mission statements and visions and produced a total of nine actionable goals, one of which has to deal with providing recreational facilities with people of all ages and abilities. So what we see here is the first step of a long strategy that we have, and what we put in was a van accessible parking space, passenger car accessible parking space, with an aisle between them, and a walkway to the pavilion, and we built that all to ADA requirements. The process, we defined the work scope that we needed and obtained budgetary quotes, and then we applied for a $12,000 funding from the county, which was approved last April, I believe. Thank you very much for that. With that, we then solicited bids, and based on still the work document, we received bids and evaluated them during the summer, and then we notified the winner and awarded the contract for the concrete work. And we split out the concrete work from the other scope, like signage and alike, because we thought we could do the signage a little bit cheaper than the concrete contract it could, so that's what we did. We held a kickoff meeting. We awarded the contract in September, and we held a kickoff meeting before starting with work, and the board members of the RCRFA oversaw the quality of the work and how it was progressed, made sure they were on a reasonable schedule, and approved all the invoices. We then found that we needed to add some gravel in the parking lot because of the ADA requirements, slope of the parking area and the walkways left us a little behind with respective parking lot surfaces. So we brought in two truckloads of gravel to smooth the transition between the concrete slab and parking space. And by November 8th, we had the spaces in service, total cost of $19,572. Now what I'd like to do is give you a quick guided tour. And the guided tour, this is the project basis that the gate contractors bid on. It shows the areas in yellow that we wanted to have constructed in relation to the pavilion and the parking lot. Next slide will show you part of the bidding document where we simulated the parking spaces and walkway with little blue lines to show where we wanted the pad and walkway to be. And then we got to work on September 26th. We had the crew come out and survey the walkway area where they're going to put, have to dig out the ground. So they removed the walkway soils, so that then the next day, they came in on the 27th and laid in the forms, and brought in some gravel, packed it down to make it ready for concrete. They also had the parking spaces that they had to get dug out. A lot of dirty work, as you can see, but by the time we came to the first, the second day of October, we were ready to, we had all the ground in, we were ready for concrete. So we had a couple of truckloads of concrete come in. We poured the aisle way first with the walkway, and the next day, we came back and we poured the rest of it. Here you can see them finishing off the concrete to give it an unskated finish. So that's the first pour completed, and on October 8th, and then they came back on the 10th to pour the other two pads relating to the parking spaces. And as you can see, we have a bit of an elevation difference. It's about six or seven inches on one corner. While the concrete was curing, we kept people off the pad while we stenciled and stretched the parking spaces. And weather permitting, we continued on with our work. Came back October 28th with our first load of gravel, and had to rake that out and pack it down, and came with a second load of gravel the next day, and spread that out and compacted it, and now it's starting to look a little bit better. And this is pretty much where it stands today. We put up the signs and parking stops, and removed all the railroad ties, compacted all the gravel, and the next slide shows we're ready for business. So we thank very much the county for doing a little bit of cost sharing with us in this very successful project. We have further steps to make the park more accessible. We'll talk about that another time. If you have any questions, I'm going to move into that. I also want to thank the board of the board in line for all their support for making this project happen. It's been a very pleasant experience.
Thank you, sir. We continue to have a vacancy on the agricultural and political district advisory committee. Do not have applications, and that vacancy is for King Landowner. So please pass people towards me, and I'll bring the new application to the board when I receive it. Next is a vacancy on the recreational facility authority, and that vacancy was entered in the paper on October 24th and 31st. Unfortunately, it didn't yield any applications, so again, board members have any thoughts of people who'd be good to serve on the RCRFA, I encourage them to submit an application. Then we have library board. Library board had two members whose terms end on December 31st, 2019. Those members were filling a partial term from a prior appointee who resigned early and served about a year or so each. Both of them, Ms. Nick and Ms. Harris, have requested reappointment. As the board's aware, you adopted a new appointment policy, and the new forms are in use and attached to board docs. With that said, RCRFA is one, or RCRFA is, but the library board is one of those bodies for which advertising vacancies is automatic. However, upon adoption, the board included an item allowing you to waive those requirements by vote, here at the board, if you thought it was appropriate. Because of the short term of the earlier of Ms. Nick and Ms. Harris, and then a reappointment, if the board's of mind to appoint these two individuals, you should hold a vote to waive, perhaps in the appointment, waive the formalities of advertising and appoint them to the library board.
Can that be the same motion?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make a motion that we waive advertising requirements and reappoint Ms. Harris and Ms. Nick.
Motion made and seconded. All over the table say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the appointments to the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services Board. That's, you have three representatives from Rappahannock County. Ms. Brooks was appointed not too long ago. Her term expires December 31st, 2021. The other two members, Demeris Miller and Anne Baumgartner, have terms that end on December 31st, 2019. Ms. Baumgartner expressed an interest in reappointment and submitted a reappointment application. Ms. Miller did not request reappointment, and both Ms. Miller and Ms. Baumgartner recommended Mr. Aichel.
Aichel.
Aichel to take that seat, and he did apply, and his application is attached. This is not one of the groups that advertisement is automatic, and so with these two vacancies that the board's of mind to appoint, reappoint Ms. Baumgartner and appoint Mr. Aichel? Aichel? You can do so by a simple motion.
I'll move to approve these two members, Ms. Baumgartner for reappointment and Mr. Aichel for appointment to the community services board.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All over the table say aye.
Aye.
All opposed and aye. Motion carried. One to the fire lighting board.
Last is the vacancy for the fire lighting board to be appointed by the Wakefield District Board Member. I understand the board member elect is somebody of mine, and will probably take care of that in January. You're off the hook.
We catch that.
Okay.
Very good, very good.
Nothing's a dull business.
H1.
H1 is the continued consideration of the finance committee charter resolution. This came out of Rules Committee, and Mr. Fraser, of course, instrumental in wanting the finance committee to be restarted. There was been discussion in the past meetings of when the appropriate time would be to adopt this resolution, because it requires you to appoint two members to the committee as well as an alternate. And so the board could do that now, knowing who the new board members will be. You could easily also pass this off to them to allow the new board members to make those decisions.
If you have a mind, wait till at least January.
Yeah, me too.
The next item on your agenda is an update regarding the Amosville title lease, which I hope to actually have the lease. I continue to struggle with SBA to get the final documentation. I did have a bit of a breakthrough with them on costs, which I believe were now down to $0 for the ground space, because they just told us, put everything outside of fence. I've set that proposed layout to president in chief of Amosville Volunteer, RNSB, have not heard back from them, but they find the layout acceptable. As soon as they do, I can wrap everything up with the lease document. As soon as they do, I can wrap everything up with the lease document. I think we're still okay on time, given the next agenda item. We'll discuss the overall schedule of the Harris project. Have to answer any questions.
Thank you for all your hard work on this, Jerry.
If the board would like to allow us to move forward, if in fact there is no cost, the board could authorize the county administrator to execute a tower use program with SBA that has no annual cost after review and approval as the form of a county term. Now I could do it mid-month if I'm fortunate to get across that threshold. Otherwise, I'll either wait till the next meeting or if we have, it's pressing enough to do it quarterly. I'll leave that to discretion of the board.
You need that in form of a motion?
If you want, if you're of mind to authorize me to execute that agreement with some constraints, yes. Because I believe without that, I'm authorized to execute that agreement.
Well, I'll put that in form of a motion that the county administrator be empowered to enter that agreement as long as there's no cost to the county. Is that appropriate?
Yes.
I'll second it. Time to change the line.
Motion made and seconded. All of the board members say aye.
Aye.
Next, and I apologize that what I've done with these agenda items is I've appended as we've moved on in time to keep the history in place within board docs. So there's a bit of a paragraph structure going there, but this item is regarding the overall Harris contract. I have not managed to make as much headway with Harris, and I've really stuck to their quote to build up the two sites. I've asked them to very clearly identify what they think is included in the contract, and I'm still struggling to get them to do that. Nonetheless, I did confirm, I believe, as I told the board at the last meeting, that the change, the amendment one to the contract included three-foot square concrete pads and some installation and $12,500 per site. And confirmed with them, if we do that, then we will credit, we will get credit for that. I do have contractors from the CWS, the tower company, contractors they use, and I've got contact information for them to bid out our own work. It should be much less than the $150,000 that Harris suggested would be. And with the changes, if Amosville is all now be set up outside the fence, if the fire department is okay, and it's very good, we'll all have to be inside. So maybe a combination of us having Harris do some work and us doing the rest. But my, I've got quotes for the comp, for the generators and all the equipment ready to go. Just have to line up the civil concrete side. Happy to answer any questions on that. I think we should be very close. The timing that I mentioned before, Mr. Williams and I attended a meeting with regional partners in Harris to work through the cutover process. The contract requires testing of the system to happen when leaves around the trees. It doesn't allow it to happen any earlier than April 1st. So right now, we believe that coverage testing will take about a month. So that would be the entirety of April, but an actual cutover will be May-June. So we do have a couple of months here to do what we need to do for our two paging sites and get that civil work done. The fiber is complete to all five locations, including two local towers. So maybe we're at the very end of a very, very long timeline for this radio system. Somebody's knocking on wood. With no questions, I'll roll into a few of legal matters, and it's all included in the board packet. Have to answer any questions for the board.
I'm sorry, Mr. Curry, back on Harris. You said it in there, and I probably didn't hear it. You're still waiting for that. So they're saying that all of this is three, they quoted $300,000 for all of this, which is a preposterous number. Ryan, you have gone back through and stripped this out and buy item, finding scenarios that the county can do this at little to no cost, or.
Right.
The vendors that can provide this with those concrete pad cabinets or whatever.
Right. So they'll provide the cabinets and the equipment. Rather than the building, at these two tower sites, there'll be stainless steel cabinets with a little air conditioners and a little DC power plant. And so what we need to do is provide a data connection and a power connection. Neither of those were contemplated in the contract, but should have been incorporated in the contract back when the customer design review occurs, but they weren't. So they have to be done. Harris quoted us $150,000 per site to do that, which is crazy. We have national contracts that we are using for the other generator project that we can use and buy two generators and propane tanks for like 30 grand. So it's really just a function of then pouring a couple of concrete pads, doing the branding work, and having the natural work done, which will be nowhere near $300,000.
They, Harris?
Harris.
And that's what you're waiting on, is the final?
The final is the civil work from me, and I'm also waiting for Harris. I keep pressing them to tell me exactly what is in the $12,510. And actually, the other balance, which there was a total changeover was $84,000 of amendment one, and trying to ask them, what exactly did we buy for that?
And are you finding their new representative to be much more responsive and easier to work with than the former representative?
And the one before that. Yes, actually, they have two project managers that are tag teaming, and they've been very involved. Unfortunately, they keep saying things like, well, we don't know because we weren't here. And my answer to that is, well, then who does know?
Yeah. Your response was, yeah, right.
Yeah. So I'm not, I don't really care if you don't know. It's your responsibility to know.
Well, thank you for your hard work on this. I think it's, you know, I want to go back through that because I know there's a lot of, we spent a lot of time, attention, diligence on this to save the county a lot of money and make up for some past oversights perhaps. I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you. So again, the legal update, the information is included in the packet, and have to answer any questions on those. We then need to jump to H5 and 6. Change it to the document.
Q2 and 3, I'm sorry.
Oh, H5, yeah, Q2 and 3 are now H5 and 6. As the board is aware, San Francisco had sent a notice of violation to the Amosville Volunteer Fire Rescue Company regarding their internally lit sign. There's been several correspondence back and forth. The last correspondence to the fire company's attorney is attached to this agenda item and basically just leaves it in the company's hands how they want to proceed and offers to withdraw the notes of violation if the company submits an application for a special exception or special use permit, which is allowed by your code for the internal item. Or there's been discussion that they potentially prefer an ordinance change that would allow the sign to be allowed by right. Their request, going back a couple of years, was to add their name to a list of names of public agencies that were exempt from a permit. But Ms. Summers, myself, and Mr. Goff reviewed the situation, and we do not believe that just because you're exempt from the permit doesn't exempt you from the provisions of the, of the ordinance. And that would stand for the county, the school board, or anybody else that happened to be listed in that section. And so we suggested that if the board really wants to make those type of signs by light at county, school, fire company locations, then a very specifically worded ordinance section should be drafted that states that so that the prohibitions do not apply. And Mr. Goff has offered to write that up so that it very clearly doesn't step on the toes of Reed versus Tammy Gilbert and would include in, if you will, what Amosville's already installed relative to size and everything else. We have not returned back from Amosville. I was told by their council that they needed to have a board meeting, and they have not responded at this point in time. Have to answer any questions for the board.
So you've given them two paths in which to proceed, and you're waiting to find out whether they're going to select a certain path or select not.
Sure. Now, of course, the board supervisors could decide to proceed with what is listed as option two here and directs that to develop such a section of the code that would add section two, the sign ordinance, maybe before it's over the home totally, that would allow these type of signs in those certain areas. If you did that, what we would have noted in the letter with Ms. Summers is that you could refer this to the planning commission. And by referencing State Code 1522285B, you can require the planning commission to refer to that back, report back within 100 days. And if they don't report back within 100 days, then the board will move on and hold the public hearing on that ordinance change without the planning commission's feedback. I think there's some concern that several ordinances were referred to the planning commission. It's taken them some time to get to them, and I thought that the fire company didn't, wouldn't be receptive to just a referral to the planning commission without a deadline But the board doesn't have to wait for the fire company to ask for that. You could drive and request them to do that today. What I said in the letter is that it could be brought to the board January 6th, and it would take them some time to respond.
Do we know if they have a, ADFR has another board meeting, just got to bring up.
I don't know. They can call a meeting at any time.
This was just on the agenda as a discussion and information item, so I hadn't contemplated taking action on it today. However, I can tell you as the board's representative of the planning commission that we are entertaining to change the ordinance based on recommendations from former, there's not even a administrator, David Dameron. So I would think it would be advisable for us at the same time to send this down to the planning commission as recommended in the letter with the provision that we can need it back within 100 days, as per the kind of decision Mr. Curry. And I regret that Mr. Fraser is not here to weigh in on this since this does impact this district most especially, but I do think that's a wise course given the rules that are argued on the mission of the planning commission law. So I guess that's a motion.
I'll second. So just so I'm clear, this is to essentially have staff draft the ordinance language identified as option number two in the letter and refer that to the planning commission referencing Cutler Virginia 1522285B.
Correct.
100 days.
Motion made and seconded. All of the board members say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Carry.
The next item is just a quick update on the two tower permits that, for the planning commission. Board members are aware, the planning commission had a public hearings for both, and following the public hearing for the Scrabble Tower voted to recommend approval to the board. Following the public hearing for the Woodville or Eldon Tower, they, the planning commission decided to hold another public hearing at their next meeting, which would be December 18th, to gauge the citizens' input on the different height of the tower, given that CWS has offered to reduce the height of the Woodville Tower to 139 feet, as well as change it to a monopole in any color choice. My main goal in bringing this to the board is to talk about the path forward. Board members realize that there's 150-day shot clock that was extended by 60 days by CWS, so therefore the board must approve the applications by February 26th, 2020 to meet that timetable. To do so, you will have to hold a public hearing after you receive the recommendation for approval or disapproval from the planning commission. And it's my recommendation that the board do that at a meeting that's not a regular meeting, and knowing that you'll have two new members. It's my plan to bring to the board at the January 6th meeting a recommendation with public hearing ads for a date in the week of January 27th to hold that public hearing. And then work between now and then with each of the board members who will be sitting at that time to find a date that works for everybody and the high school. So if that occurs, if a public hearing occurs then, then the board could make a determination that night, could make a determination at the February regular board meeting, or at February regular board meeting, the board could continue that meeting to some other date in February that happens before February 26th, or multiple meetings if necessary to make that determination. So I just wanted to make sure, shared that with the board privately, but I wanted to share that with the public and allow the board to have any input, if you have any, on that recommendation.
I've had some recommendations in terms of information that we might want to get as we move this forward that I was a little bit concerned about our timeline with the shot clock at the end of February, that I would thought it would be better to get these pieces of information in place sooner rather than later. One is asking T-Mobile for projection coverage happening after schedule, Boston Towers are bottom line. And I realize that's something they don't have to provide, but it is something we can ask for.
So interesting, one thing I was going to mention, my update was that T-Mobile reached out to me, actually reached out to John McCarthy, and wanting to set up a conversation about their plans for the community. So it's a great opportunity for us to bring them to the table for these discussions. And we can talk to them, they're not the applicants.
Very good. And so then, is it also an option with them, or are additional engineering avenues open where we can get estimates for coverage for each location in account for different frequencies and see what options are there?
If the, if the board would like to engage federal engineering who's our consultant on the radio system to prepare their coverage maps, I suspect they could do that. There would be, we have a contract in place with unit powerly rates, and it would, there would be some cost, so probably wouldn't be a ton, but if that's the direction of the board, I can ask them if they can do that.
Well, I think this engineering would be money well spent, and I think the BCA had also requested some additional engineering. well spent, and I think the BCA had also requested some additional engineering, which was never brought forward at commission level. And this, if we were to initiate now, it would give us a chance to get ahead of what is actually in front of this board. We also could use, I believe, that federal engineering contract for information in regards to emergency services, and where their 800 megahertz antenna might be most ideally located, so that we could look at that situation as well.
I've had Harris prepare and submit it to the board last year as we were doing through budget, propagation maps for two local 800 megahertz potential sites when it's very relevant, Washington, knowing that those locations would be furthest away from Fauquier and Culpeper, where all the other towers are. But certainly, we could ask federal engineering to do some work. I can probably get Harris to do it for free.
Okay. And I don't have any questions on any of these things.
Well, I think if there's a consensus of the board to use federal engineering for, to prepare some propagation maps, I would define the dollar value within my spending threshold. Just want to make sure that it's not a controversial issue. Where one person wants it, and one person doesn't want it. I don't have a problem.
Just with the short amount of time we have to work with, I want to make sure we have all the information that we need, and we get that. I appreciate your finding one.
That brings us back to meeting this. I hope the board members have had an opportunity to review this item, which is the fiscal year 2021 budget meeting calendar. I would ask the board to adopt this schedule of additional meetings, one of which is the joint meeting that was subject to discussion at your last meeting, and the school board has already added to their calendar on February 11th. These items are all interwoven into existing meetings, the school meetings, and other dates that are critical to the budget process and detachment. And if these meetings are acceptable to the board, county administration will advertise all of them in one block to avoid any issues that we have noticed for the additional meetings. Would request a motion to approve the FY 2021 budget meeting calendar.
Let me make a motion that we have heard about as presented in the package today.
One second. And I will say that it's much easier for us to advertise meetings and cancel them at the end, rather than the other way around.
Motion made, second. All those who think it's aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Regional platform.
Each year, as you were, VACO prepares a legislative agenda, and that was voted on at the VACO conference. But in addition to that, Region 7 of VACO, which includes our area down through to Stafford, we work with Eldon James, who's our legislative liaison, and we pay a small amount of fee to each year to dig into items that are more important to our region. Attached to this agenda item, the legislative platform that is balanced around some, many of these items are not critical to us, such as smart scale items that are vetoed, funding for primary roads, our primary roads are in friction. But others are critically important, including Children's Services Act, which is a large cause to locality, and localities are trying to find better, smarter ways to allocate those funds, including during local schools where possible. Broadband, of course, is very important to refer from Mr. Feynman, and others that the governor will likely introduce a budget that includes a large budget for VATI funding, and this advocates for that, knowing how critical broadband is for our citizens. And then, as I noted, smart scale of transportation, proper language, which really isn't an issue for us, but is a major issue for the fast developing localities, tax reform on local Every year, VACO and our Region 7 folks request to have the same taxing authority as cities. Every year, the General Assembly doesn't do that, but at least we should continue to ask. And Chesapeake Bay information relative to WIP3 and funding, just like last year, requests regarding alternative onsite septic systems, and you can read the rest. While all these items don't directly affect Rappahannock County, speaking regionally, usually has a louder voice, and just like last year, here I would ask the board to endorse this regional legislative platform. If you do, I'll send a letter on to Mr. James to let him know that we took that action, and he can carry that little extra weight when he talks to our legislators. Just out of curiosity, what are we paying you?
$2,500 a year.
Yep.
I think that's population-based, so sounds supportive. So I'm on my motion, we continue to use them to help us out.
Endorse this legislative platform?
Right.
That's second.
Motion made, second. All those who think it's aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carried. These benefits, all right, the board?
Yes, aye. Did you notice he cut his teeth in Parks and Recreation? Next is the Information Reports and Correspondence section. Following the format for your policy 810, I've collapsed all of the board reports into just one item, which is the shortening the listing, the agenda, and suggest that committees can report out at this time, and I've listed them in the body with the agenda item, with the board members to tell me how you want to proceed.
Well, I can, with respect to the broadband committee, I can say that did not, we did not meet in November. A couple of members had conversations, we're going to bring them back to the next meeting, which is two weeks from today, December 16th, 7:00 PM in the library. Building Committee, I guess it's the job of Vice Chair, did not meet. And I think Mr. Kerr is just still waiting on it.
Well, I mean, Mr. Fraser stated at the last meeting that the Building Committee would meet, but I've never heard from a call meeting and advertising.
So I don't know if they'll be in December or not. I'm not sure. We have two new committee members, so four. We could meet, but I'd refer to the chairman.
Wanted to make a quick updates on the OCR thing, the Parks Act, we met on November 14th, and in addition to all the normal business we do, we had an excellent presentation from Adalich for, from Friends of the Rappahannock with the watershed report card, and I was thinking it would be beneficial for the full board to hear it, maybe at the February meeting, because we have a lot going for us with the watershed. We had a B average on our report card, but there may be some things we can do as a county to work on that in the future, and take advantage of programs that are already in place, and I just think it would be beneficial for everyone to hear that. It was maybe a half an hour, 45-minute presentation. That would work well to a regular board supervisor's meeting. Planning Commission met on the 20th, and having to answer any questions about that in addition to zoning administrators update that's already in the packet. And the Public Safety Committee has a meeting scheduled for December 10th, next year in the library. Thank you.
What's the next step in the conference plan?
They're working on scheduling a work session for mid-December. That's the next step.
There's a request to add a report out from the VACO conference, and Ms. Smith, Mr. Parrish, and I attended, I'll refer to the two of you and back here.
Well, I'll just say that what was interesting to me, the benefit is we get to talk to supervisors from all around the state, and county administrators, et cetera, and it seems like a lot of counties have a whole lot bigger problems than we have, and I was actually pretty encouraged that we're in such good shape all the way around, really. So that was kind of interesting. We stood up and went to the different sessions, and my impression is that, what you call training sessions or whatever, but we're so different than the rest of the counties, that most of what I attended didn't really pertain to us. So it was interesting. I think a lot of counties are generally in our situation here.
I did want to add, I thought that the most beneficial breakout that I attended was the broadband, rural broadband initiative breakout. That resonated with what's going on in Rappahannock County, and that's where the idea for the letter of support for the Grayson Initiative through the SEC came from. That was something that they were asking us on Friday. They also talked about the model of Prince George's County in Virginia, and how they built their broadband initiative, and they really did a lot of theirs in-house, so they provided a completely different model. And I have, from the chairman of their broadband initiative, I do have their guiding documents that's of interest to Rappahannock County as we develop ours. I did take the opportunity to introduce myself to Mr. Feynman, and he indicated that he was very willing even to assign a special liaison to Rappahannock County to really help us get up to speed and get competitive for some of the programs that are coming into play. So I thought it was time very well spent, and you do feel like, wow, a lot of other counties really are working on the same things with the same challenges that we are. So I thought that was in particular, a very worthwhile session. And they seem to be recording those sessions, and that was the other thing I was going to inquire, is if those are available, it might benefit just even to mail it out, email it out to the members of the broadband committee for information as well. But that session I thought was particularly valuable, and they always just very informed with FOIA training at the end of the day as well.
Yes, the VACO website does include news to some, but not all those videos, and includes conference presentation material as well. I'll make a note to email these.
That was a very energetic session, and with the amount of funding that seems to be available, it inspired a lot of discussion.
Taking too much time on that, but I did listen in on a conversation on the budget and revenue expectations, which looked great, except there's no guarantees for non-holding revenue, which has been very good this year and the past year with its cycles. And so nobody really knows until the last minute whether the revenue is going to be here or not. So we could have a very big surplus or a very small deficit, but not really helpful for the government. Relative to social services, family first requirements from the federal government are coming down and will apply to the state sometime over the next year. Those will be some significant changes, and you know, our local social service has been getting ahead of that, particularly with finding local foster care families, and that's important today, already engaged. Attended a session on election security standards, which the state just released. Those may require us to make some improvements in the rest of our area relative to IT security, and Mr. McCarron is up to speed on that, and has been participating with the state to evaluate what they have. Lastly, I attended the Rural Caucus meeting, and that was linked to broadband. They had, the UVA was there and making a presentation on telehealth, and how advanced they are right now with some of our telehealth opportunities through UVA. Of course, that doesn't do any good if you have no broadband. So it's very interesting, and like Mr. Parrish said, there are a lot of problems out there, and we only have a few of them. It's nice to know, and the best value out of these is opportunity to discuss some of the issues we're having with your peers, my peers, to get, pick their brain and see how they've done things.
Was there any discussion there at all on this issue of rest of our compensation?
No, there, as we discussed last year during the budget, the General Assembly requested a study be completed, it was. We, of course, also just hired Baker Tilly to do a classification compensation study. They have that study, and so they'll be working that information in. Not sure what the General Assembly will do. The General Assembly may dedicate more funds to electoral boards for that purpose, they may not.
It's in the J-Lark.
But it was a J-Lark study, yeah, and last year it was through the electoral board, so that is available. I think I should, I thought I should have did that before, but maybe it's there. I can't. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, are the treasurer's I'll just point out, I didn't see anything in expenditure for revenues. They're critical, and our cash flow looks good. I will say that revenue collection is behind where we were last year, so that might be when Thanksgiving, the week Thanksgiving is. Hopefully, people are using this week to catch up, Mr. Parrish, before the meeting.
Yeah. So that takes care of that. Large slide though.
So any questions you can have to answer, things look pretty good. Just a quick update. Reminder, FOIA training for board members in constituency offices must be completed by December 31st. Several board members have completed that. Ms. Smith and Mr. Parrish at the conference, Mr. Luzinski, you've done it. I think technically, Mr. Welsh and Mr. Luzinski, you don't have to do it, because as of December 31st, you'll be on the board. So just a general reminder. Already spoke about Harris. The electrical service upgrade project, the board empowered myself and Mr. Fraser to make, to have a go-ahead to make purchases of the generators. I'm having some trouble scheduling time with Mr. Fraser to get that done, so I'm waiting on him right now. Board know that. Baker Tilly work is underway. I had a kickoff in this room with all staff, two different meetings, to let them know what the classification compensation study was, why we were doing it, why it was important. And so staff is working on position, PAQs, defining what they think their job function is, that'll be cross-referenced with their position description, which will then be used ultimately. That'll be cross-referenced with their position description, which will then be used ultimately after review by supervisors to cross-check their work with others in Rappahannock and then outside of Rappahannock. That's underway. Should get feedback, final deliverables in February, which will be used for input to the budget. The library board of trustees is in the process of which I'm a member. We're doing proposals for renovation expansion design. But they put an RFP out, received several proposals, and the expansion committee of the library met and narrowed that down to a few offers who will be recommended to the full library board for presentations. So they'll be looking to put their $1.6 million to work to improve our facility. The calendar year 2018 fire audits were finally completed and sent out. I copy the board on some of that communication. The Fire Rescue Association is working, pulled together a meeting with RFC and the companies to talk about the findings and to discuss how the companies can help each other with some of the deficiencies that were identified. So I'm working to help them with that. In November, there were no telephone landline issues, except for just this last weekend. And it sounds like Verizon had an issue in their central office that they're working on right now. And then as far as cell, I told you that T-Mobile's reached out to county administration to set up a meeting, discuss their plans, and just want to make sure that the board and public was aware that it appeared to Verizon Wireless had to be going on the Sperry Hill Tower in, or they say, this spring. So that's positive for citizen coverage, but also positive for our rent. So if we can get T-Mobile and Verizon on that side, our net will be reduced to less than half of what it is right now. I happen to take any questions.
So what are we paying right now?
Nine fifty a month.
And we're the only...
Well, there's, we're not there yet, actually, and we're trying to get that sorted out.
You're paying nine fifty a month at the same time?
Yep. That goes down to zero if there are three cell providers.
Is the regular payment still on your month?
Yes, as far as I know.
Thank you. Twelve fifteen?
Not twelve fifteen.
I'm sorry. Sorry, it's been known to be a moving target before, so.
The next item is the building permit report. A healthy, just over a million dollars of permanent work. That's followed by the zoning report and the monthly Vidaup report, which was actually the standard of spending. Thanksgiving holiday got in the way, Vidaup. And then the, a denim item, which is Comcast information, but it does include some price changes that I thought citizens may be interested in. They sent three different price listings. I don't know if we were fed from three different directions. I couldn't really figure it out. It's all included as an attachment, as well as a change to one of their programming channels leaving or coming. With that, we move to another new item on the agenda, which is matters presented by the board. And you'll see in the agenda, this portion of the policy, including the meeting, agenda layout is repeated here. And this section shall mean time for individual board members to share information with other members of the board and public. Items presented under this heading requiring action will be for future agendas. No items presented under this heading will be acted upon at a meeting at which presented, as it's not part of the orders of the day, unless it is unanimous consensus, either by voice vote or roll call, discretion of the chair of the board, that got to be acted upon at the time of presentation.
No one else has anything? I just wanted to mention, when I spent several hours at the Flatwood site the other day talking to folks and talking about the situation with the dumpsters there, I noticed that there seemed to be people that were spending a lot of time at what's commonly called the share shed there. And then there seemed to be, in a week or so after that, a lot of information on social media about people either spending all day there or coming in and just taking everything in place, even taking items out of other people's hands. That was certainly not the spirit in which that building was started. And I'm really concerned, you know, from the things that I saw there, that it could be a liability for the county if it's allowed to continue in the way that it operates now. I guess in the past, there has been signage that said maximum 15-minute parking down there at the shed, which I think might be a way to curtail it.
Yeah, I've read what you're referring to, and I'm not aware of any policy, present or past, doesn't mean it didn't exist. However, the board would like to develop policy for that function. Right, you could refer to the committees or just make a recommendation to the board. I don't know how you want to do that. Can our staff make a recommendation?
Well, I'm happy to work on it. I just wanted to see if anybody had any others feeling strongly one way or another about it. I'm concerned because I don't think it's a good use of Harvey forces to have staff constantly holding that building. I don't think that's what staff is there for. And I do worry that even with the time that they spend diligently keeping that building usable, that things still do end up on the floor. And I started to get frustrated. I worry about it being a dangerous situation a number of ways.
I can tell you that this is where we're having some staff turnover. Flatwood is closed on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And my goal is to be staffed such that I can schedule somebody for a couple hours on a Tuesday or Thursday to tend to that space. It gets out of sorts very quickly.
Yes.
And it's very often that there's more coming in than going out.
Yes.
So that's not sustainable. So staff has to selectively remove items, recycle them in some other way. We have made contact with the person that takes materials from the Washington Fire Auxiliary thrift shop that are not sold, and she takes them to West Virginia where they're more needed. And that person works with the schools, and we'll be starting having them on Tuesdays and Thursdays go and cull some of the material to get the overall quantity down so that it is removed and sent for better use somewhere rather than just piling up here. But other policies, I'd be more than happy to reach out to others in the state, see if they have policies on these sort of uses, or ask Mr. Hartley if he controls the board or taking action on it, or Peter if he remembers the order, and if you remember taking action on it.
Is the shed open whenever the landfill's open?
Anytime Flatwood's open to receive waste, it's open.
Right, but the shed is, you can't close the door as long as...
There's no door. There would be no door. That we could add, or something. The idea is you're diverting items that otherwise would be thrown away and could be used for some reason. So there's been consternation over whether people who take goods from that area should be taking them to use them or taking them to sell them. Knowing that there's more going in than coming out, I don't want to do anything that reduces the amount going out.
Right, and I don't have a problem with that per se, but I do have a problem with people taking items out of other people's hands or frankly camping out all day. I don't think that's appropriate either. I mean, I just wanted to direct the attention of the board, and we can think about it until the discussion this evening, if you prefer.
I don't think there's a whole lot we can do about it.
Well, I think the most efficient and least expensive way to do it might just be to put a timer on it, like that, you know, 15-minute parking only.
Yeah.
Long enough to drop off, long enough to pick up, clear your business, and move on.
When you decide to have something, you don't have to enforce it.
Hopefully, the slack alone is returned enough.
Any other matters, I believe, with board members?
A matter, Mr. Currie, but just a question. What is your, curious, what's the order of, how are we going to run this thing tonight? Are we meeting back here?
Yes.
We're about to go to close, but you probably would be interested to know what the sequence of events is moving forward here.
Thank you. Okay, so the evening agenda includes two public hearings that were advertised in the newspaper that would take place here. So people who have interest in those public hearings know to come here. So we must, you must convene a meeting here. There are some options from that point forward, depending on the number of people that show up for public comment and other items on the evening agenda. My recommendation would be to meet here, survey the crowd, if you will, and make a determination just after convening when you recess to the high school. I would prefer that the public hearings be held here, open, closed, and decide not here. And if you know you're going to move, you can make an announcement to the public upon reconvening that you're going to move, you're following the public hearings, which are first on the agenda. And then people could then migrate to the high school. You can finish your business on those two public hearings and then recess the meeting to the other side and join everybody who hopefully is already there. And it might be more efficient as far as people moving from point A to point B. That's just my recommendation. At that point in time, I would hang notices on appropriate places and take off all our FOIA requirements.
Like people are already thinking it's going to be at the high school.
There are many people thinking it's going to be at the high school, but, you know, I am naive enough to think that we won't be overwhelmed here. So I'm pretty sure we will be moving. That's then if 100 people show up, they'll fit in this room.
So you'll have the public comment, if we do move, there'll be public comment over there, but we'll have one piece of business, the solid waste management discussion, and we'll move into the business.
Yeah, and the board could order them the other way around if you wanted to, when you reconvene. Thank you. There are no other items by board members?
Oh.
I think it's just a closed meeting. I've heard a closed meeting motion that includes two items. One was requested by Ms. Smith to discuss brag or support supervisors. And the other is regarding refuse recycling contract terms, scope, and expenditures. So who would like to read that motion? I'm here with the Rappahannock County Board Supervisor, but the closed meeting, which forms of 2.23711A, recorded within purpose one, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to national litigation where such consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect a living, cost, or a public body. It's 2.23711A. Two, consultation with legal counsel employed or obtained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Three, discussion of the award of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds, including interviews, interviews, or offers, and discussion of the terms and scope of such contract for discussion in an open session that adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiated grant to a public body. The subject matter of closed meeting would be, one, brag or support supervisors; two, refuge, recycling contract terms, scope, and expenditures.
Second amendment motion.
Motion made in second. Give it up, please.
Can I ask one question? Because for being a closed session, are we going to include, as items included, and items of supervisors elect? Are we going to include the supervisors elect in a closed session, Mr. Chairman?
Looks like we've done that before. We've asked them, we've invited them to the table in the meeting, in the closed meeting.
I would include it in the closed meeting when you were hiring a supervisor.
I would recommend that you do, but it is the discretion of the board.
Yes, sir.
Well, if you're lucky to choose to do that, that's fine with me.
I think it'd be beneficial because they're going to, they're going to be on board when some of this is played out. So it's probably good that they can delegate them to what they're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Broke off, sir.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I also.
Close.
To each of you, certify that to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Regended Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting must convene, or heard, discussed, and considered by board supervisors in the closed meeting.
Mr. Currie, Mr. Chairman, I'll say because I left before the board went into closing meeting.
Yes, sir. Mr. Luzinski.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish. Aye. And I, Roger, welcome.
Thank you. Sir, we have several items on the agenda for this evening, and one that most people, I believe, have turned out before is regarding the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. Because of the number of people that have attended so far, and I understand are downstairs and in the hallway and perhaps outside, we have reserved the high school auditorium to properly hear from the citizens during the public comment period on that item. It would be my recommendation to hear the two public hearings that are not about that matter tonight here in this building, then recess to the high school for public comment. And the only other, the two other remaining items on the agenda that suits the board.
I think that would be confusing. I think we just recess and go over there and conduct business.
You can do that if you'd like as well.
I think that would be less confusing, because we would have one group kind of get out over, leading the whole public hearing here.
The first items on the agenda are the public hearings, and so as long as the people who are wanting to speak at those public hearings have managed to make it into the building, et cetera.
Well, the other counter to that possibly is allow people that are here that want to speak on a public comment with the Second Amendment to get a head start and get over to the high school, so they don't have to sit necessarily through these first two agenda items. And then only six or seven of us need to get over there and then we can get started because they'll all be seated. That's the, that's the other way, that's the other way to do it. Plus, we've got people waiting outside, and I don't know what the weather's going to happen right now.
No, no, we don't want them outside, but I just thought it would be pretty confusing because we conduct the business here while we have people here and nobody waiting.
Is there anything that's going on?
It's a playroom already. There's no problem with splitting it. The citizens who had an interest in the public hearings know that they need to be here at this place at this time to be heard, and so they will hear that you're moving the meeting if that's what you choose to do. the meeting if that's what you choose to do.
I would make a motion that we just recess and take the entire meeting over to the school.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
(inaudible).
Before people move that way, I might say, when you get to the high school, please enter on the left side of the building to the cafeteria entrance. There is a basketball game right now, and they have a park in front of the building. Stay trapped.
(inaudible) county code, chapter 151 of the taxation.
No, I can't hear you.
Is this better? Can you hear this? Fantastic. We have two matters of business tonight before the discussion and open public comment that probably most of you want to speak at regarding the Second Amendment Sanctuary Count. So, if you would indulge the board to work through these two matters, we'll move on to that part of the agenda. So, first item on the agenda is a public hearing for an amendment to Rappahannock County Code, chapter 151 Taxation. This change is to simply change the designated Consumer Pricing Index region that is listed in the code to change it from a designation that no longer exists to the new Washington, Arlington, Alexandria area. With that limited introduction, it would be appropriate for you to open the public hearing. So, this public hearing would be solely on the topic of this small code change to the county code and not the Second Amendment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak will get the ability to do so, just simply raise your hand and be recognized. Please stand, state the district that you're from, district that you're from, and then direct your comments to the board. And I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, raise your hand. Yes.
I can hear, what are you saying?
Wow. Can you hear this?
Yep.
If you want to speak, raise your hand. No one wishes to speak? Close the public hearing. Next time.
All right, board members, in your packet is ordinance for, to make this. In your packet is an ordinance amendment to make this small change to the ordinance. I would request a motion in a second to approve the ordinance as presented.
This seems like just a small housekeeping item, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the package in the packet as presented.
Second.
I have, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Roll call vote. Mr. Frager.
Aye.
Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
And I myself. Next time.
Thank you, sir. One more item before we move on to the public comment period. That is a public hearing for a requested special exception submitted by the owners of the Eileen Building. Ms. Summers will provide an introduction directly into the microphone. And then, the special exception will be subject to public hearing.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? All right. Alec Sharp, agent for Eileen of Rappahannock LLC, desires to change the ownership type of the property from a single ownership to a condominium ownership. In 2004, the subject property would be moved from industrial to commercial general, with the county being the owner and the requesting applicant. As part of the approval, the following uses were proffered out: a drive-in theater, a dance hall, fast food eating establishment, and a bus terminal. Since 2004, Virginia Chutney Turner Foods LLC opened a business in the building approved by the zoning administrator, Mr. McCarthy, as evidenced by his participation in the company improving cutting. Virginia Chutney, a wholesale trade establishment, does not permit it use by right within the commercial general zoning district, and given the earlier zoning administrator approval, is considered a existing non-conforming use. The Rappahannock Code 170-47M states any proposed conversion condominium and the use thereof which is not conform to the zoning land use and site plan requirements, regulations of Rappahannock County shall require special exception. A special exception shall be granted if applicant can demonstrate to the reasonable satisfaction of the local authority that the non-conformities are not likely to be adversely affected by the proposed conversion. In addition, Eileen of Rappahannock LLC and Turner Foods have included in their application for special exception a request to expand the non-conforming use from 9,600 square feet of the building to 13,600 square feet. Rappahannock Code 170-36H under the Eileen's uses provides for an expansion of non-conforming uses by special exception. Approval of the request for the expansion of the current non-conforming use must be considered like any other special exception in accordance with the Rappahannock County Code. The planning commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the conversion to condominium, as the existing non-conformity is not likely to be adversely affected by the condominium conversion, but not with an expansion of the non-conforming use at this time. The applicant is present to answer any questions the board may have.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The former zoning administrator did not have the authority to violate the zoning ordinance and create a non-conforming use when it was not allowed. I recommend that we table this or postpone any action on it until we can get that clarified. I believe we probably need to look at maybe an ordinance amendment to allow such a use because the zoning administrator certainly does not have the authority to approve something that would be in violation of the ordinance if they don't have that authority. I believe the planning commission aired without looking at this property. That's a motion to postpone to a later date till we can sort this out.
If that's a motion to table, I would second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak who has the ability to do so, please raise your hand, state your name and district, direct your comments to the board, and I declare public comment open. Does anyone wishing to speak? Yes.
I'm Stephanie Ritter. I'm from Wakefield.
If people wishing to speak, since there's a lot of you here tonight, maybe we can form a line and let you come to the mic.
Mr. Chairman, is there a time limit on the night time? Folks are going to be allowed to speak, even though we have so many individuals.
Time limit to comments to three minutes.
This is from the Second Amendment Sanctuary.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. My name's Stephanie Ritter. My name is Stephanie Ritter, and I'm from Flint Hill, which is in the Wakefield District, and I urge you not to pass this resolution. First and foremost, most, you have all taken an oath to uphold the United States Constitution, the Virginia Constitution, and laws duly passed by the state of Virginia. Therefore, if the laws that you are scrutinizing, if you will, are duly passed by the Virginia legislature, then you have sworn to uphold them. This board has neither the expertise nor the authority to determine what an unconstitutional infringement of the Second Amendment is. As Justice Scalia said in D.C. versus Heller, the right secured by the Second Amendment is not unlimited. The right is not a right to keep and carry any weapon whatsoever in any manner whatsoever and for whatever purpose. The lines between what is constitutional and unconstitutional must be determined by the courts and not by the Board of Supervisors. I think you're in particularly dangerous territory when you agree to withhold funds from state and federal agencies who are carrying out duly passed legislation. You know, on another, another issue, in the past, for seven years, I represented victims of domestic violence. These women were shot, they were stabbed, and they were hit. After I had gotten a court injunction telling two husbands to stay away from those wives, those two husbands, each one of them got guns and shot their wives dead.
Three minutes, Ritter.
If they're dead, with flag law, those women might be alive today. Do not value the possession of guns over the lives of your citizens.
Hey, let's show some manners, okay? We don't scout when someone else is talking, and maybe they won't, maybe they won't scout when you're talking.
I'm Eve Brooks. I'm from Piedmont District, and I'm here to ask you to oppose this resolution. There are many reasons. There is no, no argument at this point that we will have in this state some additional gun laws. We are hopeful, as Stephanie Ritter suggested, that some of those laws will in fact allow judges to decide when somebody is too dangerous to own a gun. That will be a legal process if that law passes. Without that, everybody here in this audience will in fact be able to keep their gun. Let's talk about what it means for this county to pass a resolution which flies in the face of the law in the state. What will happen is likely litigation. That will cost everybody here money, and it will raise our taxes. That additionally, I am not a realtor, but I do fear that when I and you wish to sell your houses here, the name of Rappahannock County will be so tarred by this action that our, our houses will not sell at the prices that we think are fair. So, simply thinking about those items alone, it depends on ourselves and our county, I ask you to vote against this resolution.
My name is Dylan Midkiss. I'm a senior at Bridgewater College. Rappahannock born and raised, hunt late to be precise. I want to start off with some statistics from the FBI database.
The main firearm targeted by these unlawful bills are rifles. But in Virginia in 2018, rifles were only used in 3% of gun-related deaths. Twice as many people were killed by hands and feet than firearms. Rifles were used in 30% fewer homicides in 2018 compared to 2017. There was a 12% drop in firearm-related deaths in 2018 compared to 2017. Rifles were only used in 297 deaths last year nationwide. In Virginia in 2017, there were 338 homicides with firearms. Only 11 of these were rifles, while there were 1,241 opioid-related deaths in 2017. That means the average Virginian is over 112 times more likely to die of opioid overdose than to be killed by a rifle or a handgun. If these politicians actually cared about making Virginia safer, why would they not introduce opioid-related bills as soon as they stepped into office? Four cities with the most gun control include Washington, Detroit, Chicago, and Los Angeles, which account for some of the highest gun violent rates in the union here. Despite having much stricter gun control, Maryland and D.C. have much higher gun-related incidents than Virginia. And actually, Arlen has killed more people in the U.S. than guns in the entire country. What we don't understand is when the news reports these firearm deaths, sure, they seem like they are astronomical, but 60% of these are suicides. 3% are accidents, which leaves 37% of gun deaths homicides, which is something that obviously we need to take care of. But of that 37%, 70% are due to gang violence with illegal guns. That is guns that were obtained illegally. Gun control will not keep guns from these criminals. I'd like to read to you an excerpt from one of the bills that is likely to be passed by this Democratic legislature. Quote, "Any person who legally owns an assault firearm, large-capacity firearm magazine, silencer, or trigger-activated on November 1st, 2019, may retain possession until July 1st, 2020. During that time, the person shall, one, render the assault firearm, large-capacity firearm, silencer, or trigger-activated inoperable; two, remove the assault firearm, large-capacity firearm magazine, silencer, or trigger-activated from the Commonwealth; three, transfer the assault firearm, large-capacity firearm magazine, silencer, or trigger-activated to a person outside of the Commonwealth." Keeping in mind, large capacity is defined as 10 rounds, which many hunting rifles and handguns that are used for protection use. Many of us have been around firearms our entire lives. But if someone needs assistance by law enforcement, no matter how good they are, due to how rural a county is, it can take law enforcement a considerable amount of time to reach us. Taking our firearms will render us defenseless. Ben Franklin said, "He who would trade liberty for some temporary security deserves neither liberty nor security." These companies will not contribute to our safety. They only have the potential to make it harder for us to defend ourselves and our property, including pets and livestock. I urge the board to stand by their citizens' rights and vote yes to make Rappahannock County, Virginia, the 23rd Second Amendment Sanctuary. Thank you.
My name is Mark Anderson from Piedmont District. I just have a couple of questions. We, I've always trusted the Legislature in Virginia. I always thought they had it back. Sorry, I've always trusted the Virginia Legislature up until now. Didn't matter who ran, Democrat or Republican, didn't matter. But tonight, tonight, we have reason to distrust Richmond and what they might do. One of the earlier speakers talked about the burden that puts on the county to enforce some of these proposed laws. That's local law enforcement. They already have a full plate. The county prosecutor already has a full plate. How in the world can they adjudicate whose house they're going to go through to look at their firearms? And seize and confiscate the ones that the Legislature says they cannot have? This is totally unworkable for us as a county. And I have no doubt that many of these proposed laws are going to be found in part unconstitutional, both under federal and our state constitution, which as most of you know includes a bold Bill of Rights. Not only that, the Bill of Rights originated in this state. George Mason and James Madison incorporated it into the state constitution and later into the federal. And I think in whole and part, many of these proposed gun laws are simply unworkable for us as a county. We have other priorities. Our law enforcement doesn't want to go through people's houses. Our people need the ability to defend their homes against airbreakers, bears, and zombies for more than they do.
Good evening. I'm Dan Lanigan, and I'm from the Hampton District. First, I would like to publicly offer my thanks to Mr. Lesinski for serving as our Hampton District Supervisor for the last four years and as Chair of the School Board for four years prior to that. I'm thankful for his hard work on behalf of all Rappahannock County citizens, especially those of Hampton District, and for his integrity and civility that he brought to this job. I wish him well in his future endeavors, particularly in quest to be our Virginia 5th District Congressional Congressman. I'd also like to address my comments towards the proposed Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution on the agenda later this evening. I would advocate that Virginia does in fact need legislation to improve safety for its citizens. One, by requiring background checks for all gun sales and transfers. Two, by implementing red flag laws to temporarily remove guns. To temporarily remove guns that the courts deem dangers for people to themselves and others. And three, by banning the sales of spun stocks, assault firearms, and high-capacity ammunition magazines. I believe such legislation is necessary for our safety and does not unconstitutionally infringe on citizens' rights to bear arms. The proposed Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution advocates that Rappahannock County spend your, hey, where are you? It advocates that Rappahannock County spend your and my hard-earned tax dollars to oppose such legislation. I do not want my tax dollars spent in such a manner, and therefore I strongly recommend that you reject this resolution. Thank you.
If we could just have a point of order, that the person who's at the podium pass the floor. And if everyone can hold their comments until it's their turn, or until the speaker has stopped, and hold their applause until it's their turn, or until the speaker has stopped, we would move through this public comment period a lot more efficiently. I believe that everyone deserves to be heard, and that's the most efficient way to do it. So if you could cooperate with those ground rules, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Don't forget, there's also a First Amendment.
Hi, my name is Kit Goldfarb, and I'm from the Hampton District as well. And I, one of the previous speakers, I also grew up shooting guns and going hunting and round hunters. And I have to say that there were people who liked it then and people who didn't like it, but we all respected each other. And I find it disheartening right now that before there were even laws, that people were saying that we're in danger. And I would hope that Rappahannock County would take the leadership role in obeying the laws and using your right to vote.
What's your name?
My name is Kit Goldfarb. And I strongly hope that you will vote against making Rappahannock County a sanctuary, a Second Amendment sanctuary district, that I think that we have a right to express ourselves in whatever way we want, but we should do it peacefully, and we should do it within the limits of the law, and we should support the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? My name is Charlotte Abel, and I come from Stonewall Hawthorne. I request your courtesy, because if I'm disrupted, I will stand here until you can hear me again, and it will take longer. I come from a long line of pacifist Quakers on my mother's side, and Irish Catholic on my father's side. My parents' families were small farmers during the Depression, but they valued education, and I sure hope there isn't anybody in this room who does not value education. My parents' families were small farmers during the Depression. I said that. My father was a World War II veteran who after the war worked his way through medical school on the GI Bill. I grew up in a red state before there were red states. I was not born here, but I share many of your values, I sincerely hope. I will ask for additional time if there is not order. I have studied history and government and practiced law as long as Mr. Frazier has been an electrician. It's tragic that there is rampant gun violence in this country. It is a serious public health issue. The Supreme Court, in a decision written by Justice Scalia, interpreted the Second Amendment of the Constitution to mean that ordinary citizens can't own firearms. I disagree with this decision, and I think it was wrongly decided. Nonetheless, because of this ruling, I accept it as the law of the land, and I believe that this country is nothing without the law of the land. It is for precisely this reason that I am against this resolution, which seeks to direct law enforcement officials of this county who have sworn to uphold all laws, not just the ones their constituents tell them they liked, to denounce their duty to uphold the rule of law. It is my understanding that a majority of the American people, including gun owners and citizens of this county, are in favor of common-sense legislation that does not outlaw gun ownership, but will have the effect of curbing gun violence. It is the Legislature's job within the Constitution to regulate inherently dangerous items such as fireworks, cigarettes, restricted drugs, radioactive materials, alcohol, automobiles, chemicals, and weapons. It is the duty of the elected officials to enforce the law. I have heard an argument that the resolution is not binding and is therefore essentially meaningless. The argument goes that since the resolution is not binding anyway, the Board can pass the resolution and then simply ignore it. This is not good government, and it serves in the short run to appease minority of voters. This stance of appeasement merely quips, excuse me, kicks the can down the road for future and uglier conversations. Thank you.
From the Jackson District, right? First thing I want to say is, join the NRA.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to please make your comments to the Board.
You're on the Board, supporting the NRA, having a gun already. Robert Crowe. Everybody knows me as Key Rock. All right. A lady that had a problem with the court system, she needs to get to a higher level than you. If she had a gun, she could have protected herself. We've opened Pandora's boxes with having guns. That's not going to go back in the box. But we shouldn't have a problem with what we use as guns as this community has safely used for years. I can't remember the last shooting in this county over something that they want to take away from us. And I'm not a big-time hunter, and I'm not a big-time gun person. I'm as anti-kill as anybody. But if anybody in here wants a certain rifle or gun or shotgun to protect their house, they should have it. Because as I remember, it is a long time from the phone call to the arrival of a deputy to get to my house. So be that as it may, I'm not a good shot, so I need a bunch of bullets. Well, and the other lady said, "Well, if we have this in our county, it's going to kill our land value." Well, a little bit of land value killing in this county wouldn't hurt a thing, because maybe the kids could stay here and build a house. So, uh, the gun issue is an issue brought by left, I don't want to say leftist, but city people in specific areas of this state that are trying to run this down our throat via states like California and especially New York. So why should we be sad their, their, uh... Their line of thinking because of two areas that are not even considered country. We're country people. If we have a problem with somebody, we take it out with fingers and knuckles and... We ain't gonna do it with guns. We ain't gonna do it with guns. And everybody here appreciates and pays care of their guns. In a very heated way. Like I said, this county needs to do it. The state is doing it. It isn't blue. We need to think red, after red, because that's what our people are, is red.
Can everybody hear me tonight? I ain't never spoke much at all. My name is Wayne... I just want to say to everybody in this whole room, it ain't about the gun laws right now that's passed. It's already starting, everybody knows that. Once you get your foot in the door, it's going to continue to trickle on down. And what I'm saying right here to say, I carry a gun every, on my side, and one in every truck everywhere I go. But I've never had to pull it, I've had two guns in my life pulled on myself, point blank, and it didn't turn out where I got killed. But I'm saying, for all the men and women that wear that uniform in Rappahannock County, if I'm in a store and something happens, I'm going to be out there pulling my weapon to protect the men and women in this county, not just because I love my guns, because that's what I was brought around. I love to hunt, fish, that's what this county was based on. When I went to school in this county, you come to school, we showed our guns to the teachers. That's how far this county and our state's going to come from. Now we can even carry a handgun to school. Or a pocket knife. I pull my pocket knife out, I throw my pencil every day. I might not done nothing with it, but I sharpened it. If everybody believes like I do, it shouldn't be a per se down right now wanting to speak. Because I'm telling you, I got a son that's got a disability, and I've been trying to get him a deer. That's what it means to me, not just so much as the law. He finally got a deer two years ago. And the pride and the joy that come to me, like my father taught me to hunt. I'm telling you, I wouldn't take nothing for that. And I'm telling you, I'm not going to lay down and let him take my guns. I'm telling you, it's why, because I believe in the, I believe in that Second Amendment, and I'm going to defend it. I ain't the best speaker, and I'm going to keep on doing what I got to do. I just hoping, I really do hope that everybody stands up and just pushes everything, like Robert said, gain a member of the NRA, join it, because that's what's going to take everybody getting together. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
My name's Alan Davis, I'm from Hampton District. And I'd like to say, you know, I'm a victim of gun violence. I was shot when I was 17 years old. And I still carry guns, I still hunt, and you know, I hear a lot of people talking about taking guns away from, I ain't never heard nobody yet say how they're going to take them away from the criminals. But I ain't heard nobody yet say, "Oh, well, we're going to get guns off the streets." Well, how you going to do that? You know, in Rappahannock, there ain't no guns on the street, there's guns in homes, protected homes, in the people in the home. You know, and I got three grandbabies, and I tell you what, I'll draw a gun down on the man in the heartbeat, you're going to protect my family. I mean, but you know, I don't... I mean, but, you know, I don't hear no talk about how you're going to defend the people in homes, like Wayne said, it definitely takes 20, or the other guy said, it definitely takes 20 minutes to get to your house. What are you going to do? Sit there with a stagman trying to get your family off of you? I mean, you take your guns out of homes in Rappahannock County, it's in the heritage ways from this county. I mean, this is the heritage that I grew up with in this county, hunting, fishing, and being able to enjoy this county. And this county, to me, is being corrupt by people and women here buying 400 acres of land and trying to tell the other people that live here all their lives how they can be. I don't think that's right. I mean, I wasn't born in this county. I come from this county, from Franklin County years ago, but I lived here, been there all my life. And if you, if you take this away from me, how am I supposed to teach my grandchildren how to hunt, fish? You know, that ain't going to take fishing license away from you. You know, I've been a sportswoman all my life, and have never had a fishing license. And two years ago, I got a damn ticket to fish. You know, I mean, come on, man. I mean, I'm a member of this community, been here all my life. I mean, I ain't been the straightest person in the world, but I do hold up the county. And like Wayne said, if a deputy needs backup, I'm going to be the person behind that circle. You know, it ain't going to be a little kid, I'm going to be the one drawing my gun and helping that deputy. So, you know, that's pretty much all I can say. You know, if you take guns out of the home, then what are you going to do for this county to protect yourself? I mean, you know, to me, it's one where, you know, y'all want to take guns out of my house, well, you're going to have to come and get them, but you're going to get the lady's purse, I don't think.
My name's Corey Groves. I've been in Rappahannock all my life. I'm from Huntley. Don't ask me what district it is. Like they said here, I've been in Rappahannock County all my life, and never did I think that such a thing would come to the doorstep of Rappahannock County where they say that they want to take our guns away. The lady prior to me was talking about having the statutes of regulation. When does it become a point of regulation? When does it go to the point of infringement on the rights of the people? I don't know about you guys, but there's this thing called the Constitution. And in the Constitution, there's amendments. And in the Second Amendment, it says we have the right to bear arms. Are you trying to take that away from us? Because it sounds like that's what you're trying to do. As, as people on the board in law enforcement, you swore an oath to uphold the Constitution. Swore to uphold the Constitution. I want to bring to mind to you where it says, uh, the statute of Marbury versus Madison, that if a statute is in direct conflict with the Constitution, the Constitution will be what governs. Now, it sounds to me like it's in conflict of the Constitution, because my Constitution says that I have the right to bear and have arms, and, and they're trying to take that away from me. I'm a country boy, just like a lot of the people that sit here in this audience tonight. And I want to tell you what, if you come to the doorstep of everyone here, knock on the door and say hand over your guns, you're going to have a revolutionary war on your hands. Because I can think of a lot of people here that's not going to give them up. Not going to give them up, because nothing means more to me than God, my family, and guns. We have a right to protect ourselves, and, and the proposed law seems like it's going to take away 90% of our firearms. That's not going to work. That's not going to work. I'm standing here asking you to please pass before this Second Amendment sanctuary for Rappahannock County. I'm not the best speaker, but that's all I got for you tonight.
Hey, I'm making way coming to wait for this, just to get the precise. I just got a couple points I want to make. Taking away our guns will not do anything, anything for anybody. The only thing it's going to do is make it harder to support your family, everything, because everybody spent their money on these guns, and they enjoy them, it's a good pastime for your family. My dad's taken me hunting much, he can, I'll take my son hunting much, he can. Drugs are legal, look how many drugs are allowed on the street. Killings are legal, no matter what you have, people are stupid and killing, whether it's a knife, even fists, like a man pointed out. I have a two-year-old son. I'd do anything in my power to take that kid, whether it be I have a gun or not. And I prefer to be a good person than a person that's going to break into my house and take my child or my wife's life. And I support that fact that you want to pass this Second Amendment sanctuary. And a lot of people are actually kind of nervous about it, but I just feel like it'd be the right thing to do, because if somebody's racing your house, especially if you don't just get, as good as this law enforcement is, it's going to take them like 30 minutes to get there. What am I going to do in 30 minutes to take my wife and my child? You know what I'm saying? It makes it hard to do. Because that boys my life, and no matter what happens, I do it. And we just need this to be passed, protect everybody's family and children. Like I said, I grew up, I grew up, I didn't watch my dad create me, but it's hard to do nowadays. You can't hardly find anywhere to go, go hunting, but that's still, you should have the right to go hunting whenever you want. I just, I feel like the problem is not killing criminals. If we can't do anything to stop the criminals, what we think we'll be able to take guns from them? That's all I can say.
I got my first rifle for Christmas when I was 12 years old. Single shotgun, 22. Got my first shotgun when I was 12 years old. Shot a lot of quail and rabbits and different things. We ate everything we shot. I was raised around that. I actually took a gun safety course right here in this school. I'll be 70 years old in January. All this started by a handful of counties that are blue counties. We have a governor that's office rocker. I'm going to defend my family, and I'm going to defend my guns. This is coming from a Democratic Party that's willing to put a newborn baby on a table and wait 15 minutes to see whether they're going to kill him. If you think the shock and awe they had over Baghdad was something, come try to get my guns.
My name is Charles Jenkins, I'm Hampton District. My father died when I was about seven, and my uncles took me under their wing, they took me hunting. I'd like my daughter to stand up, please. This is my daughter, she's 11, she started hunting this year, and she hunted a nice I've been hunting for 43 years. I own plenty of guns, I haven't killed nobody, so you can't blame it on the guns. It's, it's the people. There's sick people in the world, and just like talking about the baby, if you understand that, there's sick people in the world that's killing people. It ain't the guns. You can take guns all you want, but the black market, if you, if you do not pass this, it's just going to make the black market better. Because they're going to buy guns, they're going to have guns, the crooks are going to have guns. You might take it from me, but the DIY districts are going to have guns. You're not going to take theirs. That's all I have to say.
I want to ask you to support the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution that is before you tonight. It has been said that this action is not necessary as it is only symbolic, but symbolism means a lot when it comes from a local government body, if you want. I believe we need this resolution in place so our governor and the General Assembly know that any attempt to infringe on our Second Amendment rights, as plainly stated in the U.S. Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Virginia State Constitution will I'd like to ask you to vote yes and send this resolution to Richmond as soon as possible.
My name is Kevin Jones from the Jackson District. I'm just going to bring up my phone because I'm not very good at public speaking, so sorry for that. I'll be that way. Great Virginians like Madison, Jefferson, and of course, our county seat's named St. Washington explicitly enumerated and defined our rights as the supreme law of the land. The current intended legislation requiring mandatory surrender of personal property is an egregious, egregious violation of our rights. It is also an illegal mechanism of tyranny. The guns and accessories that they want to take from us now page the way for additional gun confiscation and elimination. Today's legal bolt-action hunting rifle with no detachable magazine, takes less than a few rounds of ammunition, and has no scary stop features, becomes tomorrow's military-grade sniper rifle when used in the hands of a lunatic. If our state and federal legislatures pass illegal laws on our rights, they are the ones violating their oath to uphold and protect our state and federal constitution. Literally sprung from Virginia soil and has been heavily paid for in the cost of generations and generations of sacrifice and blood. We, the citizens of Rappahannock, urge you to join the ranks of great Virginians to protect this sacred freedom so that we may protect what is as equally sacred to us, our families, our homes, our guns, and our country.
Dabney Hertzman, Piedmont District, and I am asking you all to please not pass this resolution. The idea that there is any attempt to take anyone's guns is ridiculous. Gun rights seem to be very, very, very well infringed in this country, and passing this resolution seems foolish.
My name is Heidi Lizethy, and I reside in Hampton District. Gentlemen, ladies, as requested, I'm speaking to you, the board. Though some in this room may not, or I'm sorry, may be confused at what I'm about to say if they don't know who I am, I believe each of you know enough that I won't have to rehash my last three-year nightmare here. I have concealed carry permit, it's in my wallet right now. I have a pistol. It's locked in a safe at home because I'm in a school and guns don't belong here. Until Ty Kamenoff, a convicted violent felon, was arrested for shooting an innocent child in July of this year, believe me, I took full advantage of both. I've had conversations with survivors of gun violence, I've had conversations with loved ones of those who didn't live to tell their stories. I feel intense compassion for each of them, but I feel a special bond with that little girl I knew was in grave danger. The little girl who feared the same monster that I did. The little girl whose name I don't even know. But I know a few Virginia Democrats, and over the years, I've had conversations with hundreds of them about gun safety. More than a few of those conversations have actually been with legislators. Curiously, not one of those conversations came even close to advocating taking guns away from law-abiding citizens. I do not believe for a single moment that the newly-elected legislature in this state will enact a single law that will restrict your rights to hunt or our rights to protect ourselves. I am very concerned, however, that law enforcement is being sent the message that common sense gun laws passed by duly-elected officials should be ignored. If you don't want to hear it from me, just ask the five-year-old that will carry the physical and emotional scars of adult and law enforcement indifference for the rest of her life. If there is a motion and a second tonight to pass this resolution, please don't delay the vote, the facts will not change. And the people that are here tonight deserve to hear your decision.
Hi, I'm Charles Justice, Hampton District. The last thing I thought I would do was speak tonight, but sitting here, I felt like as a Rappahannock citizen, a Virginian, and an American, I had to say what I felt. And I'm not going to talk about the guns to save or protect my house. I'm going to say, I'm going to play a part here. My father served this community for over 25 years, and many, many times, he would say, I don't exactly agree with this, but this is what my constituents want. And I think many of you know what your constituents want. Now, this might not hold up a year from now if you vote yes in Manseki County, but it sends a message to Richmond that you just can't, that people feel very strongly about their firearms in this community, they feel a heritage, it's part of who they are. And the gun violence and what we see... And the gun violence and what we see on TV, the tragedies, it's not about the people in this community. It's not, it's crime and needs to be addressed differently than how it could be encouraged. So send that message that you're going to vote with the citizens of your community want. Now whether you believe which way it is, I hope it's in favor of this. Thank you.
Hello, John Beersing from the Wakefield District. I want to start by thanking Roger Welsh and John Lizinsky for their service to the Board of Supervisors for the years. You've been, made every effort to be fair and civil, and I think we all owe you a great debt of gratitude for your service. So thank you very much. What seems to me to be an issue here tonight isn't really gun ownership. It's whether or not the Board of Supervisors should go on record as having the discretion to decide what's constitutional and what's unconstitutional. With all due respect, I don't think the Board of Supervisors is either qualified or empowered to decide what's constitutional. We have, the Constitution speaks of the separation of powers, and the right to decide what's constitutional resides with the judiciary. So I think passing this resolution would, you would seriously be overstepping your authority and also undermining principles of governance. I hope there's some diplomatic way of putting this matter to rest, and at the very least I would urge you to table this until such time as we can have a more robust public discussion of this. And...
I'm from the Stonewall District. Seventeen years ago, I relocated from Northern Virginia to get away from the ideals that they carried. I saw something in this county that led me to believe that this is where I wanted to raise my children, and I did so here. I'm not going to muddy the waters with talk of real estate value or battered women to further my cause. I am a card-carrying NRA member, and there is no need for a more robust conversation than what we're having right here, right now. I would encourage you to pass this resolution. I would encourage you to look at the Second Amendment versus your obligation to legislature of this state that does not supersede the Constitution. I'd also encourage what Ken had said, to consider your constituents. And if you haven't gotten an idea of what this overwhelming response to this meeting, and I don't attend these meetings, but I would venture to say this is probably the largest attendance you've ever had at one of those meetings. If that doesn't tell you the difference... The real issue is mental health and a cultural divide in this country that runs deeper than we'll ever know. And I'm here to tell you, I'm not going to threaten anybody, I'm just saying, this is a very slippery slope we're walking on right now. And if passing this resolution tells the community that you work for, that you support the Second Amendment and them, it's exactly what you need to do, and you need to do it tonight. There needs to be no delay, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
If I could ask one of you to keep my time, I would appreciate it because I'm not going to be able to pay attention to both. My name is Jay Allen. I live in the Wakefield District. I'm sure those of you who are hunters probably have a spidey sense of who belongs here and who doesn't, and I am a come here relatively recent, but I married a wonderful Virginia woman, and I couldn't be happier in this wonderful county. About tonight's matter, though, I don't think the board has the, has the authority to say anything of substance about this matter. Maybe there should be a county-wide referendum that somebody could propose if somebody thinks it's important to figure out how many people think a sanctuary resolution is going to make a difference. To me, as a non, well, I have shot something in my life, but it was waves off the Southern California beaches a long, long time ago. You know, you are predictable, sir, just so you know that, wherever you are. And I think we're going to get somewhere people can figure out some ways to deal with gun violence. The previous gentleman reminded me that I can say some words about mental health. I am a retired mental health crisis clinician for Rappahannock County, and people do get involuntarily evaluated if they are deemed by police or some other source to be a danger to themselves or others, and they can temporarily lose their rights to any guns while they're getting care, and they have to go by the court and appeal that decision so they can get their gun rights back. But I need somebody who can be compassionate and help me understand how an AK-47 is needed for hunting. I would hope something other than that would be useful to stop a break-in or whatever, but I don't know. Maybe that's the only thing that works. And if there was a general background check, that would save us all a lot of headaches. Well, then, so to the board, I hope you gracefully defer not to take any action on this matter. Thank you.
My name is Tom Pendleton. I'm from Stonewall District. I've lived here in Rappahannock County for 35 years. I'm a transplant from Massachusetts. I left that state a long time ago because of the way politics work. What we're here tonight about, and I thank you all for being here and letting us have our voice, but what we're here tonight about is in opposition to a proposal that's being made. Now, I read it, and if anybody here has read it, the ridiculousness of it is why we're here to say we don't want it. You can't have common sense gun laws when you make a scoutmaster guilty a felon for teaching a gun class. You can't make a rifle owner a felon for putting a bipod on a .22. The proposal that the governor is wanting to start next year makes nearly every gun we own an illegal weapon, and we're felons. Now granted, this county has lost some to gun violence. I don't think anybody in this room has done that. We are concerned citizens. We are hunters. I do not belong to the NRA, by the way. It's my own choice, but that doesn't mean I'm not a gun lover. Now, I feel that our rights as citizens are here because of the Constitution. The governor can't take the oath for the Constitution and then change it when he becomes governor. And that's what his proposal is doing, is propose gun laws that are not common sense. They're actually laws to make us felons for owning a weapon. Now, every gun shoots one bullet at a time. Whether that rate is faster or slower, it really is irrelevant. Any hunting rifle that probably anybody in the audience maybe on the stage owns can be made an assault weapon by everybody's standards by putting a scary stop on it. It doesn't make their weapon any more deadly or any less collectible. What we're here tonight for is to have you know our point that the governor can't change the Constitution or make amendments to it for his state, and that we're here to say we want your support to say we're not going to put up with that. We're here as a sanctuary because the Constitution is the binding word in this land. And that's what I urge you to say, we are going to support the Second Amendment Sanctuary Stat, or Sanctuary County Stat.
My name is Alvin Henry, 181 Alron Road, Kent District. I've been a resident in the county since 1980. I come from the great county of Shenador, more in West Coast, Virginia, a few miles away, and last week they had a meeting like this. And as tonight happened too, the Board of Supervisors didn't realize the outpouring of people. And if so many people showed up at the BOS meeting, Foreign Marshal was there, he says, "We can't have a meeting." So the people went outside and the board didn't decide what they were going to do. So they did a very simple thing. They asked the people outside to line up on the right side that was pro-second and the people that were against it on the left side that were anti. There was 14 people on the negative side, and it was 1,500 people here. I've served here in the county on the planning commission, various things, and I always look for the people that are familiar crowds. And I'm looking across this crowd here tonight, and I see 10, 20, 30, 50, 100 people that I've never seen before, maybe more than that. And this has been a big outpouring of people here tonight that the government here usually never sees, which tells me that the people here like Rappahannock, and they trust the governance of the county through the BOS here, but there's some things that they hold very dear to them. You can tax them, and you can charge them dog tags and things like this, but when it comes down to how they live their lives and their guns and what they do with them, that's off limits. And I think that's the clear message here, that we know how to deal with our guns, we're safe with our guns, we know how to handle them, and we don't need somebody else to interfere. My brother had a gun shop in Mount Jackson for a number of years, and I bought guns for him. I probably bought 10,000 guns over a 15-year period all across Virginia. And a few of those guns ended up in people's hands that were sick, and they like committed suicide and things like that. I don't really remember any guns that ended up in my mind. And if these laws against assault rifles and capacity of magazines are passed, then I'll be a gunner because I have excitements. And for me to turn a gun in to the government, doesn't seem right. The government taxed me when I bought it. They taxed me on the income that I earned to buy these things, and now they want me to forfeit them and not give me anything for them? That's not right. And I look at different things that happen, and like, remember a week ago in Hong Kong, the demonstrators were held up in the college area, and they had no firearms. They couldn't have firearms. So what did they use to defend themselves and try to promote freedom? They used bows and arrows and Molotov cocktails. When they finally left, police went in, and I think they confiscated like 3,600 Molotov cocktails. So, you know, it's regression here that we're talking about taking away one weapon and throwing away another. And now in Virginia, we have a situation now where the urban areas, particularly Northern Virginia, has got enough political clout, population, equal-minded, that they're going to have a say all across Virginia. So I think these rural counties, like all the counties that have already passed the Second Amendment stand, are saying, "This is not for us. It's a warning to Northern Virginia not to impose their standards on the rural areas." And I don't know, we already have two Virginias. We have West Virginia, and we have Virginia, and maybe this is going to be the start of Northern Virginia. We may be three Virginias, I don't know. But, you know, what this really does tonight is send a message that you don't have carte blanche to do whatever you want in Northern Virginia, and you've got to listen, and saying the same thing to the government. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Robert Yow. I'm a resident of the Piedmont District, that's Christine Smith District. I'm proud states that I was raised here in this county. I've been living in any county. I intend to keep living here in this county. I fully support the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. In January, the New Virginia General Assembly will meet to discuss usual, the new legislation. Believe it or not, already there are several prefiled bills ready to go as soon as they convene. Senate Bills 15, 14, 16, 22, 35, 51, 67, 69, 70, 75, and as well, House Bills 2 and 9 are just further examples. These are all going to infringe on our right to own guns. First and foremost, what can this county do? Well, it's spelled out in the Virginia State Constitution. Section 1, Article 1 of the Virginia State Constitution is our Bill of Rights. Section 1, that all men by nature are equally free and independent and have several certain rights, of which when they enter into a state of society, they cannot buy any compact, deprived, or divest their posterity, namely the enjoyment of life and liberty with the means of acquiring and possessing property and pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety. Section 3, and this is perhaps why we're all here, it begins, "That government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community." Further, it goes on to say, "And whenever any government shall be found inadequate or contrary to these purposes, a majority of the community," not the state, not the legislature, "a majority of the community has an indubitable, inalienable, and indefensible right to reform, alter, or abolish it in such a manner as shall be judged most conducive to the public will." Where we're right here in the right here. The important part, Section 13, the militia, that a well-regulated militia composed with the body of the people, trained to arms, is the proper natural and safe defense of a free state. Therefore, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. What is the definition of or composition of militia according to the Code of Virginia? The Code of Virginia, Title 44, Chapter 1, Article 1, Subsection 44-1, "The militia of the Commonwealth shall consist of all able-bodied residents of the Commonwealth who are citizens of the United States as well as those who intend to become citizens of the United States." These are, who are at least 16 years of age and not more than 55 years of age. The militia shall be divided into three classes: the National Guard, the Virginia Defense, and the unorganized militia. That is every able-bodied person who is able to bear arms. That's me, that's many of you right here, right now. In other words, all able-bodied who are not in the National Guard or the Virginia Defense are this unorganized militia. Militia, as it's originally intended, were to have access to weapons that were the same, if not dissimilar, as to what a trained military army force was. In the 18th and 19th centuries, the standard weapon was a single muzzle-loading, two-stop muzzle-loading firearm. Today, here across the world, the typical standard firearm is an assault firearm. Now, what's the military's definition? Military's definition is a weapon that is both semi-automatic and fully-automatic. While it is possible for a citizen to get a fully-automatic or an assault firearm, it's heavily regulated by the ATF. Most people do not undergo this procedure to legally own one. As a result, most citizens only have access to semi-automatic weapons. These such firearms can only be semi-automatic. Senate Bill 16 would specifically target and designate these as assault firearms. By the military definition, they cannot be assault firearms. Regarding Section 13, focusing on what the term "well-regulated" means, I believe it's important that we understand the 18th and 19th century definitions of this phrase. It didn't really have anything to do with regulation. It tended to be the equivalent of well-organized, well-armed, and well-disciplined. In other words, a well-regulated militia means something that would be properly trained and ready to perform its duties. If Rappahannock County would approve this Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution, this would be an important step for reminding our elected officials in Richmond that would be an important step for reminding our elected officials in Richmond that they will be in clear violation of the Virginia Constitution. The United States Constitution is a direct monument to our family, fathers, and everything they fought for. We would be using our indubitable, inalienable, and indefeasable right to reform our government. Why? Because the unorganized militia's right to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Further, we are upholding certain rights, namely the enjoyment of life and liberty with the means of acquiring and possessing property and obtaining happiness and safety. Thank you.
Good job, Robert.
I'm Jesse Foster from the Flintville area. And I just wanted to say, my whole family's always lived here, all the way from the park when they started moving people out of the park. My dad has always raised me to hunt, to slaughter, to do whatever I had to do to put people in a pit. That's the way I want to teach my kids, and that's the way I always wanted to be. I started hunting when I was about eight, and I went with Herbert Foster, who's passed away. And my first deer was, I almost killed my first deer there. So when I bought my first gun, and I named it Frankie, because me and Frankie really care for the woods. Anybody ever tried to take that away, it'd be like losing a friend. And I'd probably throw some lead at somebody.
My name is George Deans. I'm a recent transplant into the Wakefield District here in Rappahannock County, very, very recent. Do you all want me to use that? I feel like my voice would be good, but maybe not. I just have just a few things to say tonight. I believe the lady that spoke earlier in the beginning, she wanted to speak about how, you know, these gentlemen, they came back and they, you know, they killed these women after, you know, their guns had been taken away and all this stuff. Why didn't they have their own gun? You know, why did these women not, you know, shoot them in the face when they come to kill them? What about the five-year-old? Yeah, what we have to remember is, you know, the government is not here to protect us, you know, the police, all that, that's all well and good, but it's all about personal protection at the end of the day. Having your own firearm to protect yourself is what it's all about, it's what it's always been. From birth, everyone has a natural-born right to defend themselves with the best means possible, meaning a firearm this day and age, unless maybe, you know, you have a recreational nuke, you just want to drop it on me. I don't know, I don't. But, yeah, that's what it's all about when it comes down to it at the end of the day. We sit here, we speak about how criminals, you know, criminals, all this stuff, they will always have firearms. No law, no nothing, no police officer, no, nothing like that. It's just like drugs, you know, drugs, all that stuff, it's been outlawed for years and years. They're still rampant on the streets, you know. Over in Page County, a place I'm very familiar with, you know, we have so many over there, it's unreal, you know. I know a number of houses where, you know, people are holed up all the time with their drugs, you know, and it's a great wonderful thing, you know, whatever. If they want to kill themselves with it, so be it, you know, it's not up to me. You know, we sit here, we talk about getting rid of our guns, you know, we don't think about down the road, we don't look back into history itself, everybody wants to forget history this day and age, you know, what happened in, you know, Germany there years ago to the Jews, modern-day Venezuela, let us not forget about Hong Kong, you know. If everybody over there had a firearm, we wouldn't have had all these issues. But all those people that stood out against the government, they're going to be hauled off to some camp somewhere and shot in the face, because guess what? They didn't have a firearm to protect themselves, okay? So that's why I'm going to hold on to what I have, as well as everybody should in this We had a, I think a lady and a gentleman got up here earlier, wanted to speak about how the guns aren't going to be taken, they're not going to be taken. This is a slow erosion away of the rights. What they want to put in place today is nothing but a slow erosion as to what is to come. You know, they sit here, they talk about the ARs, the AKs, all the semi-automatic stuff. Eventually, that's going to turn into the hunting rifles, the shotguns, all the more simple stuff, you know. We can sit here and talk about that all day, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's about shooting tyrants in the face, which is what this is turning into anymore. You know, I'll be the first person to say it. They want to take all of this away so eventually they can do what they want with people, just like they did in Germany, okay? No one should have to turn in something that they paid their hard-earned money for, their 40 hours a week, however many, some more, me personally, around 40. No one should have to turn that in. If they pay for it, it's theirs. They want to charge you an additional $200 for suppressors, you know, et cetera, SBRs, that's bull, okay? Why should you have to pay an extra $200 for a piece of metal? Anybody know why? No good reason? And the only other thing I want to say is, everybody that got up here and said, you know, the board, they don't have the right to speak as to the Constitution, you do have a way to say a big F-U to the people of Richmond, okay? Laws are a need, very unconstitutional, so I hope you folks have a good night.
All right, so I want to start off saying that I did not plan on speaking tonight. Actually, just found out that this was being held this morning. I'm getting to that. So my name is Jacob Woodaker of the Wakefield District residing in Chester Gadd. So to go back to what Dylan said, 60% of people lost their lives due to suicide from guns, and the 37 who died of homicide, and then 3% were accidental. So I want to bring a number to that. Those numbers come from 39,773 people who lost their lives due to guns. Believe me when I say that everyone else in here who wants the Second Amendment, stay with the UH-OH. Believe that there is a problem, but you can't just try to reform our gun rights, because ultimately, with that not working, who says the government and Democratic politicians will try to do? Now let's go over to how many lives are saved each year. There is an estimated between 500,000 and 3 million lives that are saved through the constitutional right that we have to bear arms. As said by one of the speakers before as well, do these people proposing gun reform really believe that taking away our guns would stop gun violence? First off, semi-automatic pistols are used by lunatics, kill way more people than any semi-automatic rifle. Also, to tackle down on the argument brought up that we need background checks, that is clearly only said by those who have never purchased a gun for themselves. You cannot buy a gun if your background check signals that you may be a danger with it. Why do you think that criminals keep getting their hands-on guns? Because they have connects with gang members, all sorts of things, from the black market to be able to keep purchasing guns. If you say gun violence is such a problem now, just wait until we take it away from all the United States of America's goods, citizens.
How y'all doing? My name's Tom Bay. I just want to come up here and say that man who grew up about 25 miles north of here, John Marshall once said, "That any law that's repugnant to the Constitution has not only the duty to be disregarded, but the writers of this law should be fined and given." Now, the founding fathers were criminals in the eyes of the king's law. We have King Ralphie in Richmond right now. He should try to do the same thing to us. Now, I would, I've been a law-abiding citizen my entire life, but I would be honored to be a criminal. If he passes these laws and sends redcoats to my neighborhood, I will fight back and I will not comply with any of these laws. And I urge you to pass this two-way sanctuary resolution tonight, and I urge you to also pursue a two-way sanctuary ordinance, so it has the teeth of law behind it later down the road. Thank you.
These are tough facts to follow. I'll be very well with this. I'm Dick Deacon from Hampton District, and I urge the board to pass this resolution. There's been a lot of references to the prefiled bills that are waiting right now. These people haven't even sworn in for the legislature, and they've already got more bills than we can count on. And there was a reference about making us felonies. Every one of us in this room that are voting for this are going to be felons as a result of this reaction in Richmond. I should have probably been arrested 10,000 times in my lifetime, I grew up a pretty hard way, but I'm not a felon, and I don't plan on being a felon. I urge this county to be the 23rd county in the Commonwealth to pass this. We've got a governor that's got egg on his blackface essentially, and he will sign anything that's put in front of him, and this is a danger. Probably the only way to end this thing is an old adage that an armed American is a citizen, an unarmed American is a victim.
My name is Catherine Sisson. I'm Catherine Traynor, and I'm from the Jackson District, and I am no victim. I strongly honor the heritage of hunting and fishing and working with your kids and folks here in Rappahannock, so strongly. I'm thrilled that a gentleman has come to my property a number of years to harvest deer that have overrun our part of Rappahannock. I'm also grateful to have heard the many sides of this issue this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity presented by the Board of Supervisors to hear everyone tonight. The Second Amendment has been and will continue to be adjudicated in the courts. That is where this conversation will, of course, continue regardless of what happens this evening. I encourage members of the Board of Supervisors to vote no on this resolution. Our country is one of law. If I suddenly decide that someone here does not have the right to their First Amendment right, and I try to shout them down and obstruct that right, that's not appropriate. Instructing our law enforcement people to not obey the laws of the state of Virginia, regardless of which party is currently in control of the legislature, is also not I too disagree with lots of the laws of the state of Virginia. I don't go out and get carried away by encouraging my fellow community members to disregard I hope that everyone who is here this evening will let their feelings be known to the legislature as they consider these laws. That is where this conversation will shape the law.
Thanks, Jason, from Greco. I think it's pretty evident so far, as far as the gun confiscation part of this legislation goes, y'all can obviously see what the people stand if it's in the room. There's another part of it that hasn't really been discussed. There's also some wording in the legislation that says that it'll be prohibited for anyone under the age of 21 to use a firearm, even when a company by. My son's 12. There's five guns in the house that is, some of them I bought for him. One of them's passed from his grandfather who's passed away. My two-year-old son has a gun in the gun safe, but soon as he's older, it's been passed back from his grandfather. My daughter has two guns. All that's be prohibited from me transferring them to them if something happens to me according to what I've read in some articles of this legislation. I think the fact that they're talking about gun confiscation is stupid, just point-blank, but the fact that they want to prevent me from teaching my son and my daughter how to hunt, how to defend for themselves, I think that should be taken into consideration by you all. But also, as far as how you lean towards this, I think there's a whole lot of dads in here that take their kids hunting, and part of that is in this legislation also. The gun controls out of it is something that, in any need, there's a whole lot that's spoken all the more eloquently than I can about that. But the one who wants a four-year-old that he gave to a hunter, he's a pretty big boy. That's part of our heritage here in this county. You all got elected by the people in the troop.
That's right.
I think y'all need to remember that.
Hi, I'm Ellie Clark. I'm from John Hazinski's district. I don't know if you can hear me. I think it's really neat that you all are sharing your knowledge of gun handling with your children. I think it's great. The gun safety is something that you want to promote. I'm in favor of that. I'm not in favor of taking away any hunting ammunition or hunting guns, but I think this is a slippery slope that we would be going down to lead to the individual decision which laws to obey and which laws not to obey. I wonder how sheriff's officers and deputies feel about this. Are they going to have to think about that when they go to use their guns? This is something that I hope you will go very slowly with. Think about it, and more input from the community.
Page 20, Jackson District. I was forced for 35 years to live in Northern Virginia because my job was in Crystal City in the Pentagon. So I understand these people that are from the Blue Territory, because they live in a place where there's far too many rats in the cage. They can't defend themselves, they know that, and they also don't know how to defend themselves. And that's the conflict here. We're a rural county, we have a lot more space, we know how to defend ourselves, and we do it safely. What I don't like, oh, one other point I wanted to, a lot of them said, correctly, must be the other mic I have on, that A lot of them said correctly, must be the other mic I have on, that you don't have the power to rewrite laws. They're absolutely right. But the absolute power you do have is money. They can write all the laws they want. They never fund the full implementation of them. There's nothing that restricts you from not funding something. You're not required to fund everything they do. You have full financial authority. So that's your power. If you didn't understand that, I'll explain that to you. Finally, the one that concerns me, the part of the laws that they're proposing that concern me the most are the red flag laws. As you all know, I am a free commenter and quite critical of a number of people in the county, particularly in the government. And there's a lot of social angst that I create. How many of those people with a suit call the sheriff on a red flag law, have them show up at my door, possess and confiscate my guns without due process? And if you don't think that's the way the laws are, I can give you case after case after case, like my brother-in-law in New York, whose estranged wife decided to get even and have his guns confiscated. He never threatened her with anything. He wasn't there and boom, he never got his gun back. Of course, he later went to Tennessee and got an AK-47. So what I ask you is to approve this resolution. I also ask you to stick by it and if there is a law that you think comes down to a requirement that comes down and requires you to fund something and is not fully funded, do not fund it. Period. And that will stop because you actually have the ultimate authority in enforcing laws. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm glad to show up. My name's Tim. I'm from Sparrowville. It's a little new here. I'm not sure what district that is, start with that. But you know, you hear a lot of people say today, you know, it's our diversity that makes us great. I disagree. It's our freedom that makes us great. It's the ability for each one of you in this room to be free. You know, a couple of comments that say y'all don't have the authority to rule on this. Well, you know, since the last time I checked, it's still a government for the people, by the people. We voted to put you in. We gave you the authority to do it. So I would urge you to vote yes.
Hello. My name is Arthur. I live in Sparrowville. I guess that's the P. Martin District. Deep Chanda. And I'm here to urge you guys to support the resolution of Rappahannock's second sanctuary. I think it's quite obvious that these laws would not really be effective in stopping any real violence in the county and that it would do a lot more to create such a big conflict between the constituents and law enforcement. And I think that a lot of people throwing out things like mental health and drug use in America and crime. And I think to advance the conversation, pass, oh, you shouldn't be allowed to own these kind of weapons or these kind of magazines. We need to be thinking about how to stop crime and how to stop a drug problem in America and how to stop a mental health problem in America. I think a lot of people that end up murdering people or go on mass shooting or even suicide, that's 60% of the gun deaths in America. I wonder how many people like that are on some kind of psychotropic medicine. I think that's a major contributor in that aspect of gun violence. I think if you look at... I was born in California. I was raised, I went to high school in New Jersey. And I know a whole lot of people that have been shot out there, but not really any in Virginia. And they've got a lot of good control. And see if I've got anything else in here. Oh, yeah. If you look at gang shootings and these are mostly over drugs and things like this, they're all in the illegal realm and how do we accomplish that? That's obviously much greater than what the county is capable of solving. But those issues are based around poverty and lack of opportunity and lack of education and getting caught up in the criminal justice system when somebody goes to prison for weed or something. It's a lot harder to get a job and try to make something of yourself after that. I think these are the things, these are the conversations that we need to be having about making our society better as a whole. I think that would do a lot more to lower the amount of people murdered in general than trying to restrict access to firearms. That's all I got.
Good evening. Dave Tonnick from Stonewall District. I want to say a few things. First of all, I'm so proud of all the people that showed up here tonight because I think if I look around the room, I've been coming to Board of Supervisor meetings since about 1978. And this is the biggest crowd I ever saw at a Board of Supervisor meeting. So thank you all for coming to the meeting. And those of you that didn't get up and talk, get up and talk because if you're just sitting there, they might not know what side you're on. I'm so proud of some of the younger people that I saw up here that are so well-versed in the Constitution that me as a big-time lawyer, I don't have to cite any cases or recite any constitutions or any amendments or any of that because the young people that were here already have already done a beautiful job. Part of the glory of that goes to this school because they must have learned it somewhere. And it's really great to hear for somebody my age that don't hear it much. You certainly don't hear it on TV too much. I want to tell you all a little story and share something with you that probably most of you aren't aware of. I spent about 10 years in the former Soviet Union working as a consultant on legal reform. And one time we took a trip out in Siberia and one of the people that worked on our project was a lawyer, a professor, and she had a friend in the project that was what they called there a believer because a lot of people weren't believers. And this woman took us to, from two men, about three hours up into Siberia to a church that had been restored to the Russian Orthodox Church that was given back to the church that had been taken away during the revolution and was turned into a prison. And so we went there because they were restoring this beautiful old monastery. And there were a whole bunch of workmen that were working in orange uniforms while we got there. And we went up in the church and so forth. And when we came back out, something happened that I would have to say was one of the most shocking things I ever saw. Because these men, they were working, they were carrying these baskets out from a big pit that they were digging. And when I looked in the baskets, they were all full of human skulls that they had excavated out of the basement of that church. And every one of them had a gunshot bullet hole in the back of the skull. And there were five or six bushel baskets of skulls and they weren't finished yet. So that's what happens when you lose your freedom and when you lose your liberty and when the government takes the guns away. And some of the people in this room that I heard talking tonight that think they're such good people and they're so concerned about everybody's liberty and freedom and blah, 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 they are fools. Time is up. Don't be a fool. And don't you all be fooled either. What they said, what Ken Exa said about what Pete said is exactly right. We're your constituents and the majority of people, the overwhelming majority of people here, it's obvious, want this. They want it bad. And yeah, they want you to send a message. And I heard one other thing, stupidly said, how this is going to lead to some kind of litigation and cost the poor taxpayers money. Well, I'll tell you what. If a county gets sued, I will volunteer my time for as long as I live. I'll defend the Board of Supervisors and I'll defend the sheriff and I'll defend Art Goff or whoever's the Commonwealth attorney if they get sued for free. And I'll win.
Commonwealth in Hampton District. I'll try to be brief. I'm with the majority, the overwhelming majority of the situation. Yeah, so I'm with the majority on this situation. I'm a huge gun owner, big proponent of the Second Amendment, big proponent of my right to armed self-defense with the proper tools. I don't believe in owning a five-round magazine or an eight-round magazine when I buy myself on my farm in the middle of the night trying to defend myself for a 30-minute response for local sheriff. And that's what it is sometimes in any world. That's happened to me several times in my life. The right to self-defense is inalienable. You have, there should be no restrictions on it. Places that do place unconstitutional restrictions on it are Chicago, New York City, Maryland, Northern New Jersey. None of those places are places that I won't want to live at. And people who want to have, turn Central Virginia into New Jersey, I'm happy to buy you a bus ticket.
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I'm here to talk a little bit about this sanctuary city thing. I think a lot of people are scared that their guns are going to be taken away and I don't want that to happen either. But I think a lot of this occurred because so many people are talking about gun violence and they want gun control and all that kind of stuff. And I think people really need to understand and go to the crux of the matter is that why are some of these happening so we get this knee-jerk reaction from people in our legislature to try to do all these rules that they think they're going to be able to enforce? I think we've had a couple of young people here who have said that your state constitution and your state bill of rights already protects us. So this particular sanctuary amendment is not something that really needs to be done. And I want to know so why. When you think of all the gun happening in our country, why has they happened? The one in Sandy Hill was because there was a young man who had a mental health issue. The one in the church in South Carolina was because a young man had some mental issues and there was a person who knew him. He took away the gun that he had hidden there, but then he was afraid this guy was going to do something, so he hid it back. So there's a rule that we have nationwide that's called see something, say something. I'd like something like that put into this resolution and I'll tell you why. We have an example of that that happened in Rappahannock a while back. There was a young man who was going to do like a Columbine thing on the anniversary and somebody heard and reported it to someone, a parent, someone in authority, and that young person was apprehended and that was totally taken care of. So we never had that disaster here in Rappahannock County. That see something, say something, that's something that could have prevented Dylan Root in South Carolina if the young man hadn't been so afraid of Dylan and had reported him taking the gun away and reported what he'd been doing. That's another one that could have been averted. So I think we need to redirect our thinking as to how we can make this happen and so we can prevent things like this in our legislation. So if we redirect and say, part of this resolution, we don't want to ask our people not to disobey laws. We want them to institute things, make a demand that we want mental health issues to be addressed. We want something like see something, say something, put into the educational system of the state and have people understand that that's what's going to protect us and so we're all going to be able to keep the guns that we want.
Good evening, everybody. First, thank you all for taking up this issue. I certainly appreciate it. I'm Steve Hensley from Stonewall Harpoon District. It's disturbed me greatly listening to some people say we don't have any authority to do this, you don't have any authority to do this. This country is based on the fact that the people have the authority. That's what it's supposed to be. That's what the Constitution enshrines, is the authority resides with the people. What we're trying to do here is to take some of that authority we have and send a message to Richmond, to people that feel that they can pass any law now and violate the federal and the state constitution. I've been reading as many of these bills as I could. Granted, they're proposals, but still are quite frightening in what they're going to Just trying to confiscate and ban firearms based on their looks or their design nowadays is going to be almost impossible. There's so much crossover in the technology that basically you're going to be taking everything. I have a farm here in the county, been here all my life. This past week, a gentleman took probably the third-largest block ever taken on our farm. He did it with a firearm, which will now be banned and confiscated. He just, just after years and years got that thing up and working, took a beautiful shot. It's a hunting rifle, but according to the proposals, it's an assault weapon of some These weapons are good for a lot of different things, especially in a rural area. But our legislators don't care about that. And so they will continue to work on these issues. This will only be the beginning. They're not going to stop. What we're asking with this resolution is that we're sending a message. And I don't see the problem with that because frankly, if we look at the sanctuary cities where the illegal aliens in this country, they are telling their officials and their police to violate federal law and not report illegal aliens. So it seems to me that that has given us the idea and what we should do is we cut our sanctuary city here. So... The last thing that we all need to realize is, and as we brought up earlier about not being able to train your children with firearms or teach them to hunt, this is nothing short of cultural genocide. Face it. They don't like us. We are not urban. We are not elite. We are not highly educated, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can't integrate anybody except rural folks anymore. And so the fact that you want to teach your kids how to use a weapon or to hunt horrifies many people. And those people are now in power in Virginia. And so you shouldn't take these proposed laws lightly. Thank you.
My name is Philip White.
What we're asking with this resolution is that we're sending a message. And I don't see the problem with that, because frankly, if we look at the sanctuary cities where the illegal aliens in this country, they are telling their officials and their police to violate federal law and not report illegal aliens. So it seems to me that that has given us the idea, and what we should do is we cut our sanctuary city here, so. The last thing that we all need to realize is, and as we brought up earlier about not being able to train your children with firearms or teach them to hunt, this is nothing short of cultural genocide. Face it, they don't like us, we are not urban, we are not elite, we are not highly educated, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can't integrate anybody except rural folks anymore. And so the fact that you want to teach your kids how to use a weapon or to hunt horrifies many people. And those people are now in power in Virginia. And so you shouldn't take these proposed laws lightly. Thank you.
My name is Philip Wyatt, I'm a senior here at Rappahannock County High School, and not the best speaker, but I'll do my best. I'm going to start by addressing you and saying that some have said that you don't have any authority to do this, to pass this. Well, I mean, 22 other counties had enough reason to do it, and I believe that sends a message to our state Capitol. And even if it's not allowed and against repeal, it sends a message that we need. Another point I'd like to make is this is not solely about hunting or our heritage. I believe this is about government tyranny. The reason why we have this amendment in place is so we cannot have another regime, if you will, like we had before our country was even founded. We didn't want another tyrant, I guess. What I'm trying to say is, to start with these bans, where they just ban capacity for certain weapons, they all have the same function, they all do the same thing. Once they pass these, they'll pass another. It just gets continually worse until us, we as a population, are very easy to manipulate, and by then we've lost our rights. Our Second Amendment and our First Amendment are supposed to protect the rest of our constitutions. That's all I have to say.
Hell, yeah, boss.
All right, howdy, y'all. My name is Nathan Grant, I just want to say a few things. I'm trying to get, like hell, to bring my wife, to bring my son out here, he's seven years old, well, about to turn seven. And I wanted to bring him out here to speak about this, and to speak about guns and gun safety. And just to bring about a few things, I asked him, I said, "What are you doing when you're not shooting a gun?" And he said, "You put it on safety." I said, "Very good." I said, "What are you doing when you're walking with it? Where does the rifle need to be? Where's the butt damn need to be?" He said, "Towards the ground." I said, "Very good." I said, "Where is it when you're not shooting it or not carrying it?" He said, "In the cabinet." I said, "Very good." He said, "But I can't touch it." I said, "Mommy, your dad told me I can touch it." I said, "That boy." And I want to bring that up because that's a six-year-old saying how to use a gun. And if the six-year-old can know how to use a gun, then I believe an adult should know how to use a gun. And also, there is mental health issue bringing up. And I have a, my oldest brother is bipolar, and he's a spiritual bipolar, he is medicated, and he goes hunting all the time, and he goes bow hunting and also rifle hunting. And there is times where he knows that it's not right to use rifle. And he also knows when there is time. And so, yes, there is mental health issues in America. But also, before even rifles were even existed, I'm pretty sure in the Bible came Abel, killed Abel with a rock. So is rifles really the issue? Or are knives, rocks, that'll that damn chair? People are evil, and they're going to be evil. So. I don't know, I don't know, y'all try it, so.
Y'all don't got the whole shot.
My name is Sharon Probst, I'm near Spurryville. I was listening to the radio the other night, pretty late, and I heard a person that's running for office now, the president, I think his name was Bo or something or another. And he wanted to tax not just the wealthy, but the poor people, so that they didn't make, tax them so much that they would be able, not be able to get soft drinks and junk food, but that they would use their money to buy better stuff. And I'm thinking, well, if they don't have any money, they can't buy anything if they're taxed really heavily. So what are they going to have to do, especially here in Rappahannock County? They're going to have to take their rifle and their $1 bullet and go out there and try to get a piece of meat of some sort for their family. But if they don't have their guns to go out there to get food, and if they're taxed out of their minds, they're going to want to feed their children. I have almost lost a lot of my children from starvation in this county a few years ago, well, quite a few years ago, because I didn't have a means to feed my children. And I hope nobody would have to go through that. I mean, it's very sad to put your children dead early because they are starving. Hoping they won't notice that they don't have anything to eat. But anyway, like I said, if people are going to try to tax us so heavily that we won't be able to buy good food, which we wouldn't be able to buy good food if we didn't have, you know, we don't have money to begin with, we don't have enough to pay the high taxes, so you're going to have to feed your children. So the point is, we need to have our guns so we can go. All right, thank you, bye-bye.
My name is Richard Brady, I live in Mannhill in Wakefield District. And in that regard, I'd like to say, before we talk about this resolution for a minute, Mr. Welch, I appreciate your service to the county for all these years. I thank you, sir. Now, just so we can get it straight, I would love to see a unanimous vote from the Board of Supervisors to approve this resolution. And I want to say this, I don't believe if you have sent a resolution to Richmond the way you should do, that it's going to cause any kind of constitutional crisis. That's a bunch of baloney. I also don't believe it's going to cause a showdown in the front of the courthouse between our county sheriff and the Virginia State Police, okay? What it is is a statement of a belief and the intent of the people who live in Rappahannock County, where I am so proud to live, and where I am so proud to look out on this much civic involved. And I don't care if you're for it or against it, you did a good thing by coming here and making your point. My point is, please approve this resolution. And then everybody says, "Well, it's only symbolic." Well, let me tell you something, as a Christian, there's a lot of symbols that count a lot to us. To me, you know, the symbol of the cross is very important, but it's only a symbol. It's awfully important. If you happen to be a Jewish individual, a stardate might be your symbol. It's an important symbol. And I think this is an important symbol that you need to send to Richmond, to let them know where this county stands. I thank you for holding this voting key. I wish you'd held one like this before you voted on Earn a Buck, but that's another.
Hello, my name is Kieran Bean, I'm from the Hampton District, and I do encourage you all to make up, to vote on this tonight and send it to Richmond. I'm not really good at public speaking, but I grew up here in the county. This is a picture of me about five years old, holding a shotgun, real live rabbit in it. My father taught me very well about firearms when I was a child. I was a boy who never had. At 16 years old, this is a deer I got. I took a day off from school, I was one of the few women that actually hunted back in those days, and this is me skinning the deer. Boy, were a lot of the boys jealous. Well, that's just a few of the little things. To get to the bigger things, some people were running for the sheriff, and the county stands on a lot of this gun stuff. Well, I'll tell you, I had a stalker in my life, it took me a year to catch him, a year to put him in jail. And it was the sheriff that was here that gave me the right, as many other people had the right to do, to take a firearm class, to get a concealed permit, where I would not be afraid, even though most people knew I wouldn't be afraid anyway. But that was what the sheriff did for us here in this county. He took a large group of us and taught us how to have a permit in a safety form. And Tim Banston is sitting in the back, I'm sitting with him tonight, and he taught me a safety course in the 70s. We had it in school for the children to know how to carry a gun in a safe manner. And this is something we need to still teach our children. Some of the adults don't even know how. So they really, I mean, all these safety things, the sheriff, the gang warden, all these things are coordinated amongst the county, and we know each other, but they should be put into the county as things that the kids can learn, and the parents can be there to help teach them as well. So I am very happy to see everybody here tonight, a lot of you I know, a lot of people I don't know. So that's all I have to say, thanks.
Anyone else here to speak?
I have one little thing to add. If you're for the Second Amendment, raise your hand.
We the people.
If you're against, same side. I just want to know where we're standing.
Is anyone else here to speak? Public comment is closed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to, just as a motion, if we amend the order of our agenda so that we can take care of the discussion of the resolution first, before we go on to the decision for a word, but things that aren't quite as important as the majority of people here tonight. The order to go from new business, R1, would be in front of huge, solid, which management.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. I guess it's a bit incumbent upon me to lead off, if I could. Everybody hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
I have a real problem projecting, they tell me, and I know that that's real. In seventh grade, I was put in a drama class, and I even volunteered to help the janitors so that I wouldn't have to work in that class. But they didn't let me do it. I had to take drama and public speaking. I didn't do a real good job. Anyway, as many years as I've done this, I still have problems speaking in public. So I really want to commend all of y'all that came out tonight, especially the young people. You did a remarkable job. I'm still more afraid to speak in public than I would be of killing that bear that that 11-year-old girl killed, and I haven't done that. So that's a part of my notes here. Now, we've been told that we shouldn't do this, but I've been to Richmond just a few times, and most of the committee rooms that will be discussing these bills that are already prefiled will not hold a group of people this size. And we've got 23 counties, maybe, that have already taken this up, we're the 23rd, but I know we're, there's one scheduled, I think, tomorrow night in Culpeper, Falkia, is, I think, next Thursday night, a week. They can't possibly get this many people in Richmond to discuss these issues. Ballot access, we don't have access to the ballot for a referendum, so that's out, not even worth talking about, we're not going to get a ballot referendum. And another thing, Rappahannock County used to be the western part of Culpeper. People here tonight that spoke, their names are on the list of Culpeper minimum. Their families have been around that long, protecting the freedoms that we enjoy. So it's, I think it's appropriate that what we discuss here tonight, it's very appropriate. And I've spoke to the sheriff, and the proposed resolution I put forward was just, really, it was a template, and I missed a very important part of it. I don't want to talk. I don't blame you for being upset right now. You're properly in order. It's on the third page, the last whereas. Whereas Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors wish to express its intent to stand as a advocate of county for Second Amendment rights into oppose. I'm not going to read that paragraph, but all the way down to the very end of it, it says in that we have the power to direct law enforcement and the employees of Rappahannock County. I want to strike law enforcement because really, we don't have a police department, and we don't have the right to instruct the constitutional officers and police, the deputies, we don't really have that. So I'd like to strike through that line where it says, "Law enforcement," and it will read from the comma just in front of that, it'll say, "And the power to direct employees of Rappahannock County to not enforce any unconstitutional law." And that's the resolution that I'd like to propose here tonight. I'll put it in the form of a motion so that we can discuss it.
Second, purposes of discussion.
Motion made, second, discussion open. So it's obvious that we need to send a message to Richmond. There's been 22 other counties that's done it, and one of those counties is the county of New Kent. Their motion is, their amendment is real simple, it's real direct, and I think it's something that all of us could agree on. It probably would be important if we could do this unanimously. I personally have problems with what we're presented with in this resolution that's in our pocket for tonight. Talked to the sheriff, she's got problems with it. Talked to a number of citizens. It's convoluted, it's hard to understand, and... And this one from New Kent is very simple. And it sends the message to Richmond, which is what we need to do. And I'm willing to vote for that. I personally cannot vote this one in. We need to either use the one from New Kent, or we need to table this and amend it where we can pass it, where we can vote on it, because it is important to send a message. But I'm not comfortable with this one, I'm sorry.
Read it.
What's the difference?
Okay, I'll read the one from New Kent. I can read both of them. Okay, what they say is, "a resolution in support of Second Amendment rights. Whereas, the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution states in part that, quote, 'the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed.' And whereas, the same language is also contained in Article One, Section thirteen of the Constitution of Virginia. And whereas, the New Kent Board, would be Rappahannock County Board Supervisors, feels that the right of citizens to bear arms is stated in both the United States Constitution and the Virginia Constitution, is a fundamental right that should be protected to the greatest degree possible. And whereas, the governor has proposed to the General Assembly of Virginia several measures regarding gun control, and it is expected that both the governor and individual delegates and senators will introduce such legislation in the 2020 session of the General Assembly. And whereas, the New Kent Board Supervisors wishes by adopting this resolution to express its strong support for the rights of citizens under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article One, Section thirteen of the Constitution of Virginia, and urges the governor and members of the General Assembly to take no action which would violate the freedoms guaranteed in both constitutions." And it goes on to say, "Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board Supervisors of, in this case, Rappahannock County, that the Board hereby expresses its strong support for the rights of citizens to bear arms pursuant to the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article One, Section thirteen of the Constitution of Virginia, and urges that members of the General Assembly and the governor to take no action which would violate the freedoms guaranteed in both constitutions." That says what we need to say. I'm a hundred percent comfortable with this, and I think the rest of the board would be. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this one, but it's convoluted, it says things that we...
Put it to a vote.
What's that? I would love to vote on this New Kent, but we have to... Just a second. I did, I spoke to Supervisor Smith earlier, and there is one minute change that I forgot to mention in my motion. I'd like to change my motion, amend my motion. And that would be, under the resolve part of the resolution, it would be the one and two, the third paragraph, that the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors hereby expresses its intent that no local or public funds of the county not be used to restrict the Second Amendment rights of citizens of Rappahannock County. That way, it cannot be taken as some sort of a punitive measure against any of the comp board funds that our sheriff department receives. I don't want it to be misconstrued. That's not my intent. And I don't think that's the intent of other people that wrote this template that we have before us tonight. That's my amended motion.
I have a second, Second Amendment.
No discussion, Mr. Chairman, on that change, on that amendment. I ought to start out by thanking, also thanking everybody that came out here this evening. I learned a lot about the community here tonight, and I feel like I ought to introduce myself a little bit, too. I'm a veteran, I'm a gun owner, I'm a hunter. I learned how to hunt. Was taught how to hunt by a Vietnam veteran about twenty years ago, and I spent time my son how to hunt. And also have a concealed weapons permit, and I own a number of guns. So your concerns on this mean a lot in terms of being a democratic process. It strengthens our community. But I have to say that I do believe that any laws involving the Second Amendment, folks, it really are for our state and our federal lawmakers to determine, and I think this board is overstepping. It runs, it runs down to the bill and rule in Virginia, and we just, it constrains our authority, it constrains this here in our local municipalities. And if you fight this thing with lawyers, I get a lot of people say, hey, if somebody tells you it's free, it ain't free. Look, if protecting your gun rights is your goal, in this measure, it could be. It's inefficient, it could be costly, it could possibly not be legal. And I think there are more respectful ways that we can go about protecting our gun rights and keeping our community safe. But I think this, I think these resolutions are just overreaching. So we have to respond, I think, to concerned citizens that worry about gun violence and shootings that we've had, whether it's in our malls or in our places of worship or in our schools, putting our law enforcement agents, law enforcement folks at risk. So I just want the board to know that I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be supporting it.
So I repeat, I... Ron, you would possibly consider taking this off the table?
I have a motion to read it.
Well, I'll read you one paragraph of the first one, the one that we're voting on. It says that the Rappahannock Board Supervisors hereby declares its intent to impose any infringement on the right of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms and using such legal means as may be expedient, including without limitation court action. I think that's dangerous to put in there. And who decides what's an infringement? It would be, I guess, one of us. And that sounds subjective and arbitrary. That's why I think this one that New Kent had, they did the same thing. They're one of the twenty-two. This would send the same message to Richmond, and it would be, it's something I could vote for, and if we could vote on this, it would pass tonight, and we could be over with this. If I could, interject just a second. This board has spent nearly a hundred thousand dollars already on a legal fight trying to protect, as one supervisor has said, his good name. And we can't, we can't join these other counties with language that says that we will spend a little money, it would be basically like a class action suit if all these counties joined together. It would be a small amount of money to fight this one. This board has spent money on itself, and you're saying that you will not spend money on the taxpayers? But notice what you said, sir. I was saying that, I'm just saying that this, it's important that we go ahead and send a message to Richmond. And so what's the difference? What's the difference? It's the same message. Yeah, I can read the full one on the original.
Well, I think most people read that because it was what was advertised for tonight's meeting.
I hadn't heard one bit of it.
Okay, I'll read it, I'll read it. Whereas, the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, quote, "The well-regulated militia have been necessary for the security of the free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas, the United States Supreme Court in District of Columbia versus Heller, five-four, U.S. five-seven oh, two thousand and eight, affirmed an individual's right to possess firearms unconnected with service in a militia for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. And whereas, the United States Supreme Court in McDonald versus Chicago, five-sixty-one, U.S. seven-forty-two, two thousand and ten, affirmed that the right of an individual to keep and bear arms is protected under the Second Amendment, is incorporated by the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment against the states. And whereas, the United States Supreme Court in United States versus Miller, three-oh-seven, U.S. one-forty-seven, that's nineteen thirty-nine, opined that firearms that are brought of ordinary military equipment or with use that could contribute to the common defense are protected by the Second Amendment. And whereas, Article One, Section thirteen of the Constitution of Virginia provides that a well-regulated militia composed of the body of the people trained of arms is a proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state, therefore, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas, Article One, Section one of the Constitution of Virginia reads that all men are by nature equally free and independent and have certain inherent rights, which when they enter into the state of society, they cannot by any compact deprive or divest their prosperity, namely, the enjoyment of life and liberty with the means of acquiring and possessing property and pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety. And whereas, Article One, Section two of the Constitution of Virginia reads that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people that magistrates or their trustees and servants, and at all times are meaningful to them. And whereas, certain legislature that has or may be introduced by the Virginia General Assembly and certain legislation that has or may be introduced in the United States Congress could have the effect of infringing on the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms as guaranteed by the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution and Article One, Section thirteen of the Constitution of Virginia. And whereas, the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors is concerned about the passage of any law containing language which would be interpreted as infringing the rights of citizens of Rappahannock County to keep and bear arms. And whereas, the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors wishes to express its deep commitment to the rights of all citizens of Rappahannock County to keep and bear arms. And whereas, the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors wish to express opposition to any law that would unconstitutionally restrict the rights of the citizens of Rappahannock County to keep and bear arms. And whereas, this is really confusing, this is one of the ones I have a problem with. Whereas, the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors... Sorry about that. "Wishes to express its intent to stand as a sanctuary county for Second Amendment rights and to oppose within the limits of the Constitution of the United States and the common of Virginia any efforts to unconstitutionally restrict such rights and to use such legal means that is disposable to protect the rights of the citizens of Rappahannock County to keep and bear arms, including through legal action, the power to appropriate public funds, the right to petition for redress of grievances, and..." And we've always stricken this part. "And to redress of grievances and the power to direct employees of Rappahannock County to not enforce any unconstitutional law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board Supervisors of Rappahannock County, Virginia, that the Rappahannock Board Supervisors hereby declares Rappahannock County, Virginia as the Second Amendment sanctuary." That the Rappahannock Board Supervisors hereby expresses its intent to uphold the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Rappahannock County, Virginia. And that the Rappahannock Board Supervisors hereby expresses its intent that public local funds of the county not be used to restrict the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Rappahannock County or to aid federal or state agencies in the restriction of certain rights. And that the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors hereby declares its intent to impose any infringement on the right of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms using such legal means as may be expedient, including without limitation court action. And it says, "Now therefore, be it resolved that the clerk of the Board is hereby directed to forward a copy of each of the Rappahannock County Representatives in the Virginia General Assembly and a copy spread across the pages of the men of the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors." I haven't spoken tonight, so I'm taking the opportunity to thank all of the citizens of Rappahannock, and especially Wakefield District for supporting my being in their position, monitoring as a supervisor of Wakefield District for twenty years. I didn't get there by always voting the way I wanted to vote for anything. Sometimes you do have to vote what the constituents want. Now, I grew up here, and I hate to see division amongst the people, especially people that I know, people that are my friends. And sometimes tonight, I was a little bit upset when you couldn't allow the other person to speak. It's one thing to disagree, it's another thing to be disagreeing. But I want to thank everyone for letting me be here. We got a new girl, Debbie Donahue, is going to be taking a new position, Janelle. Hope all the people in Wakefield get behind you. Thank you. We addressed those points. That was, I'm sorry. We struck the language where it said that this board would instruct local law enforcement. We don't really have that ability, because the sheriff is a constitutional officer. The deputies work under her supervision, and that's it. And I understand, and if I should have coughed that, it wouldn't have been in here if I didn't.
So he took just that part out, then rest of it.
And then the part about only local funds is what we're restricting. So the sheriff, I think sixty percent of the sheriff's budget is state funds, or maybe there's more. I don't know what the equation really is at this moment, finally, but we would not be trying to restrict her comp board funds because that's something that's not in our control to start, other than we appropriated it as part of her budget. So I think my amendments here tonight addresses her concerns.
Okay, so if she, if passes, then she's concerned that the state government is not going to give her the parts of the funds that she needs to obtain.
I'm not sure of that, but right now, I actually shouldn't have started the conversation with you. I'm sorry. But that's trying in a form of explanation, because I'm sure other people have the same question.
I just, I wanted to say something, too, because I haven't said anything yet this evening. And I did also have a conversation with the sheriff. And I do believe that the changes that we've made to the resolution address our concerns adequately. And I also had a conversation with the county attorney. And I don't believe there's any legal reason for us not to pass the resolution. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Both, but I just wanted to afford the other supervisors the opportunity, and I don't want to speak for you also. I wanted to afford you the opportunity to address any of the concerns that have been raised this evening. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Smith, I don't know if anybody in the audience can hear me or not.
No, okay, you are, go.
Can anybody hear me? My concern, Mr. Fraser, addressed, and that was... So the power to direct law enforcement, that's not something that the board has, because the board is not in the chain of command of the Virginia State Police or the local elected sheriff. However, they do certainly have the right to supplement income and to fund programs that may be... that may be proposed by Richmond to enforce some of these laws, like a gun confiscation task force or whatnot, that they would be asking for local funds for. And the Board Supervisors would at that point have the right to say no. So I think Mr. Fraser's amendment also, that in the third paragraph of the penultimate where the therefore clause regarding public local funds is appropriate, because as Mr. Fraser has explained, the Compensation Board, as Richmond, funds the majority of the operations of local law enforcement, including my office, as the Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney. This is, these are scary times. You folks showing up here and speaking, and speaking your mind and your honesty and your wit made a huge impression upon me and I think the other members in the Board. I don't have their power to vote, but I can say in response to this, Ms. Smith and I talked, and I had a chance to talk so much to Mr. Parrish, and I expressed my concerns to him about the local law enforcement part and the funding part, but other than that, maybe it's not to my taste, I like something a little bit more elegant, you know, as far as draftsmanship, but that's a personal predilection on my part as a drafting attorney. But I see no legal infirmities to doing this. The Dillon Rule, you brought up. I think that ignores a part of 15.2 that says that the local boards have a right to pass resolutions of matters of concern. None of this says that what they're doing is unconstitutional, we don't know yet, perhaps it will be. Certainly the courts are going to address those issues, I am sure, on time. So I believe it, and I have my faith in that process. I don't think that we are going to get too excited too soon before we even see what passes Richmond, but what has been said here this evening regarding sending a message to Richmond may help avoid some of that. That's the points I have as to how the thing agreed, and what Mr. Parrish just read, I can't say there's any legalities to it.
If I could, I didn't mean to shut Mr. Baugh's office out of the... But he's right, the majority of the funds for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office is also a part of the money, I believe. I didn't, and I had my stuff in town.
I'm a conservative, but it's Jerry Garcia.
That's a nice thought.
So that's all I have to say, and I just wanted to also thank everyone for coming out.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else...
The way your people want you to move.
If no one else wishes to speak tonight on the issue of your, I would call the question.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'll stand here.
Close the door, hang a right.
Hold on, hold on.
I couldn't hear what you guys were saying at all.
Garbage.
We didn't spend any money.
Adjourn.